From closed session, there is no reportable action. Direction was given to staff.
Thank you. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Johnson, would you lead us, please? Of adoption of the agenda?
Second.
Call roll, please.
Mine.
Machines.
I don't. Okay, well, I can.
Because I'm absent.
I'll do a verbal roll call.
Okay.
All right.
Mine's not coming up either.
Just one moment. Councilmember Johnstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodson?
Yes.
Sean Weber is absent. Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pittman?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Any presentations and proclamations done this meeting? All right. And then this is the time for a public communication hearing of non-agenda items. Do we have any cards or presentations?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. We'll begin with Sean Reese and follow that with Billy Spear.
Hi, Sean.
Good morning, Mayor. Councilmembers? My name's Sean Reese. I'm a field representative from the NorCal Carpenters Union, Local 1599, and I'm advocating for a cause that is crucial to the well-being of our community, the need to provide labor standards on construction projects. Area standard labor language needs to be the template developers use in Oroville on any future projects. Construction workers are the backbone of this area's growth and development, working day in and day out, dedicating their skills and labor to shape our landscape. Yet far too often, they face the harsh realities of low wages, inadequate benefits, and limited job security. This not only affects our quality of life, but also hinders the growth of our entire community. I would like to express to you that without these standards, the construction force is systematically abused through wage theft, 1099 where workers have no workers' comp when injured on a job, and a litany of safety violations. Healthcare and a livable wage are a vital necessity to the workers building these projects. Apprenticeship programs ensure the projects are built to the highest degree, and local hire ensures not only tax revenue for money spent by the workers, but ensures those workers can enjoy the basic things in life, like spending evenings with their families, maybe attending a child Little League game, or going to a dance recital instead of sitting in traffic for two hours. Before I got in the union, I spent years and years working for non-union construction outfits, working on the road, watching my kids grow up through FaceTime and phone calls, spending hours driving to work to communities that are spending hours to commute to my town to work. It's tough. It's tough on the workforce and it's tough on the communities. By promoting responsible local hiring practices, we can create jobs for our own residents, reducing unemployment rates and fostering a sense of pride and ownership in the projects that shape us. The housing crisis in California is a very real issue, and the only way to mitigate the problem is by building more housing. But we shouldn't take advantage of the workforce helping us solve this crisis, and those same workers should be able to afford to live in the communities that they are building. The language that should become the policy here in Oroville would support responsible contractors that are already doing the right thing by their clients, employees, and the city itself. These responsible contractors have proven time after time that they can perform at the highest standard, and this policy would bolster our working class and cultivate a responsible market for good contractors. This would create a minimum standard for developers that are coming here, telling them that you value your citizens that build in our land. I look forward to talking about this more with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Up next, we have Billy Spear.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor?
I didn't come up with the verse of the day, so I'm using the one that came on my Bible app. "The wind blowing like crazy. I've been running all over the places." Not an excuse, but anyways, the one on the Bible app is, "The Lord is not slow in keeping his promise. As some understand slowness, instead he is patient with you, not wanting anyone to perish, but everyone to come to repentance." And that's 2 Peter 3:9. And I'd like to pray with you all. Father God, we thank you for this beautiful day. What a beautiful day. We also thank you for the storm that we just went through. It was a wonderful storm, mighty storm. It got us all praying and being thankful when it's over. And, Lord, we pray that you would continue to help us, Lord, to see your wonder in everything, to see you at work, and thank you for your protection over our city. And even back when the spillway broke and it was stormy then, and, Lord, you worked it out for the blessings for our city, that there were jobs came and our spillway got rebuilt. And, Lord, you worked through the storms. Continue to bless our city council. Continue to bless their families as they pour out all of our city officials. Continue to bless the firefighters and our police. Thank you for our police and code enforcement and municipal law enforcement. Thank you for all that you're doing, the rescue mission and the mighty things you're doing there. Continue to use them to make a place for those who don't have a place, the Housing Navigator and the Hope Center. Thank you for all of the churches and the ministries that are active in our church, all of the service groups. There are so many. And in this new year, I pray that you would continue to add the increase. Continue to bless our city, to give us that supernatural wisdom, supernatural provision, supernatural guidance, supernatural protection in every storm. We are truly grateful and thankful. I pray to you to help get through the agenda. Again, give supernatural wisdom. Your word says, "If we ask, we'll receive generously." In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you, presenters. Next item is reports and discussions. Council announcements. Are any reports? Any councilman? I have two items. I want to mention that we had the docent recognition dinner, which was very well attended and a nice affair. During that dinner, I was reminded by Ann Chamberlain to make sure that we all show up Saturday, on the 10th, for the Chinese Year of the Dragon celebration, and the dragon from San Francisco will be here. So between 11:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. at the Chinese temple this upcoming Saturday. So, and I did my job. All right. Any other council reports? No. Administration reports? Oh, the, well, Councilman Goodson, excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, please go ahead. Rotary Roundup.
Go ahead. You go ahead. You got it.
So this is, United Way of Northern California hosted a toast to equity in readiness of the Wind River Casino. Now, why is that so important? It's not that I'm a board member, but it is because one of our nonprofits, the Oroville South Side Community Improvement Association, received an award. Additionally, it was so nice to look over the audience. There was a little less than 400 people there, but it was so good to see our Vice Mayor present. The Chamber of Commerce was there, and it was just nice to see that the city of Oroville was represented in reading. So appreciate you coming.
I guess I'd remiss, too, in reporting about the Rotary Roundups this coming Saturday weekend at the municipal, or the convention center, starting at 6:00 and running until 10:00, I believe. Anyone else? And administration reports, please.
There's just a couple of quick things. I wanted to give the council an update. The Lexi Poll, the citywide new policy manual. I've been working on that for, gotta give, big thanks to Ron. I know Ron's not here tonight, but been working with us and Liz, our HR manager. We've spoke to, handed it out and had conversations with all the labor groups. We've worked with our city attorney's office, and it will be coming before the council in March for adoption. So it's been something that's been long on the list for about the past 11 months at least, so. So it's coming forward, as well as the charter review. That'll be coming back to the council on March 5th as our target date. So again, that's going to be the recommendations from the subcommittee that was developed, and certainly it's an opportunity for the full council to provide more input on that as well as the public. So it'll be coming on March 5th. And I want to just take a moment, too, just to thank, I know Fred is going to give you an update on the, just a storm that did hit Sunday night, but I want to give a big thanks to our Public Works crew, as well as law enforcement and public safety. I think they all did a fantastic job in keeping the debris and the public right of way clear that night. I know that many of them were up till 1:00, 2:00 in the morning, and just huge thanks to Fred and his team over there. That's all I have.
Thank you. And on the co-tells of that, just the basic numbers on it, we had roughly six folks out for the last 48 hours, accumulating about 120 hours of labor between the six folks, monitoring the creeks, doing debris out of the creeks. With the power failure, we had four of our sewer lift stations impacted on that. All have backup generators. Everything went as planned, except for one at Butte Oaks. The transfer switch failed, so we had to do some work on that in the middle of the night. No SSOs to report. The team did fantastic. Everything is back online as far as lift stations, for the exception of Olive Glen, which is over by the DWR headquarters. It is still on backup generator running. PG&E updated a little while ago. They're thinking maybe 6:30 tonight, the utility power will be restored. So we still have folks monitoring that as well. The street department, we cleared about 14 trees. There were private trees on the public roadway, cut them back, pushed them out of the way to keep the roadways open, monitored the storm drain hotspots. There was a lot of plugged DI's in the middle of the night with direct ponding or, you know, just localized ponding, and we took care of those as well. So they were very busy throughout the course of the storm. And by and large, minus the transfer switch at the one pump station, we did pretty well. And I'm very proud of our team. They did real well, and they had great communication with me throughout the night and where they were at and what they were up against. So it was a job well done, so. Yeah, that's it. Agreed. Thank you. And yes, thank you very much. They certainly did. Patrick?
I do just have one thing I wanted to, I think last meeting I mentioned the Civic 101 program that we're going to, the cohort that we'll have coming up. So we did nail it down a date. It'll start on the second Thursday of every month. It'll go for eight months, start in March. So that'll be March 14th, and it'll finish on November 14th. The idea is that it's, we have eight sessions that we'll do. It'll end just before the holidays, and so we'll start it next month. I'm going to start taking reservations for the cohort next week. And I think if it's okay with everybody, I'd like to just do it in this room right here. I feel like it'll create sort of an immersive experience into the, into the city government as we're talking about city government. And I feel like this will be a good room for the first time around, too, because we wanted to go every year. And if it gets bigger and bigger, if we have a lot of interest, then we'll look at something else. But also, this room is free, so. So everybody watch out for that. Thank you.
Do you have a time?
I'm sorry, 6:00 o'clock. And what I'm thinking about is not calling it a one hour, but because I think that some of those might go over, you know, an hour and a half. My departments might be over an hour. Fred's department could very well be over an hour. But so I don't want to have it be that, you know, lock into an hour and we don't, it's too rushed, but I also don't want to commit people to an hour and a half every week, because we may not need to fill that every week, so.
All right, great. Thank you. Amy, anything? Nothing? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I did just have one thing to report. I just wanted to let your council know that we did go live on Next Request, which is our new online PRA software. We went live roughly 10 days ago. Since then, we've received nine requests. Eight of them have been fulfilled with a rough estimate of 2.5 business days from open to closure. And so I just wanted to let you guys know, as well as the public, that they can go online and submit their Public Record Act requests. They're also welcome to come in and still submit them over the counter if that's what they'd prefer. But if you do prefer to do it online, you can go down to thecityoforoville.org, the Services tab, and it'll be the last option on the bottom left-hand corner.
So this new software is something the city's never had before?
Correct.
So it's brand new?
Brand new.
Thank you. It's fantastic. There's a tremendous amount of information in there. Once public records requests have been processed, there'll be a repository there for folks to maybe find information that's been searched for previously. They can go there and look. It's just going to be, I think it's the user friendliness of it and the workflow. It's a pretty phenomenal tool.
And I do, sorry, I just wanted to let your council also know, I do plan on providing you regular updates regarding those numbers as they continue to increase and level up.
Thank you. Bill, Police Department? Okay, thank you. I will say, too, from being in the business, in the public safety business, for the widespread nature of the power outage, given that we weren't the only community without power, looking up and down the state, I'm amazed that we have power today. I predicted, we were started planning the issue about not having power for a couple of days. And when it came on at my house at 4:00 in the morning, I was in shock. We still have some in the city that are not getting power. There's just a few, but it'll happen tonight. So, you know, kudos to PG&E and their crews to get out and deliver that product. Like I said, I'm amazed that they were able to do it when you consider everyone else was out. Numbers like 300,000, 400,000 people in California, so. Kudos to them to get her done. Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. Please.
And then I also just wanted to make comment about social media posts by our law enforcement. Great job. Just a lot of positive. You guys just really were right there, keeping the folks up to date. So I really appreciate that. Yeah, good job.
Yeah, I think when the trees started falling, I think they got a phone call every minute, and every tree in town generated phone calls all over the place. So it was a little bit outrageous in some respects, but that's what happened when, you know, Mother Nature lets us know who's in charge every once in a while. All right. Any other reports, looking back and forth? If council do have something, our little things aren't working, so just raise your hand. Next item is the consent agenda. Any questions on the consent agenda? If being none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Johnstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pittman?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next item is number five, regular business, award of contract to Lamont Construction for the State Route Highway 162 ATP pedestrian mobility.
My apologies, Mr. Mayor. We have the public hearings scheduled for 5:00, so we could jump to those.
That goes at 5:00.
Then number 11.
Okay, public hearings, 5:00 p.m. Item number 11, agreement for cities' participation in the SCIP and BOLD programs. Patrick?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. At the last meeting, I introduced these programs that provide pooled bonds for developers to have access to bond funding, or so, low-cost money to help them with their developments, so that they can have, they can do their infrastructure, and they can pay their fees out of these bonds. The bonds are typically between $500,000 and $5 million. And the two agencies that provide these are the California Statewide Communities Development Authority, which operates the skip program, and that is the statewide community infrastructure program, and the California Municipal Finance Authority that operates the BOLD program, the Bond Opportunities for Land Development. The two programs, they are available to any developer within a city where the council has adopted an ordinance that allows them to participate in these. So these programs could be available to developers. We have actually spoken to, I think it's three developers that are already, that are really interested in this, and getting, putting the cart before the horse. They've already started talking to these agencies about participating in them. The low-cost money is, the interest rate on these bonds is much lower than it would be if they went to a traditional lender. And then it also, it has the end user, the homeowner, sort of pay for their share of the cost of these infrastructure improvements. And that's done over a 30-year period, sort of in a mellow rose type of thing. So I do have two members, or a member from each of the agencies. If you have any questions that might get in the weeds, I might be able to answer some of these. And if you do have any questions, I'd like to open that up for that now.
Council, Vice Mayor Smith, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just two quick questions. So did these developers come to you post you announcing the exploratory, you know, looking into this program? Now here we are, of course, getting ready to, you know, get across the finish line with this hopefully tonight. And then, secondly, the three that expressed interest, are they market rate and/or better as far as what they're looking for in the way of projects?
So I'm not actively recruiting any affordable housing. They just seem to be finding us. So I'm only recruiting market rate housing. Say yes, they're all three market rate housing developers. And they are, I had been sort of taking the temperature of the development community over the past few months to see if this is something that they might be interested in, if they might use this. And so they had expressed that they would be interested and that they would like to have this. As I told them more recently that we are bringing this to council for approval, then they started to really get interested. And then two of them wanted to reach out to these authorities directly. And the, I learned about this through a finance assistant. I don't know what you might call him, but he's, one of our developers is using this person that's helping them find money. And so he brought this to us and said that if we were to have this, this could help him with this project. It's the Linkside 2 project. And when I told him that we were taking it to council, he said as soon as we, if council adopts these tonight, that he's going to reach out to all of the big developers, so Lennar and Hovenian and all those, to see if they might be interested in some of the, this massive amount of opportunity that we have for development here. Thank you. Sure.
Councilman Goodson?
So my question is, I just claritate, the developer must own land here. Is that commercial land?
Well, I might ask one of the people online, I don't know if they have to own it or if they just have to be, have it tied down, you know, if they have to have an arrangement to be able to operate there, to be able to develop on that property.
Permission. All right. Are they available?
Ralph, are you online?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes. Could you hear the question, Ralph?
I did. Yeah, so it can apply to either commercial development or residential, is typically residential. The developer would, in order to form the districts, they do need to own the property, you know, in order to put a lien on it. Yes.
Thank you.
That makes sense. And I think I had mentioned this last week also, that if we wanted to, that we could initiate a project where we could do streets, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, lighting, that type of thing, but it does require voter approval. So it requires a two-thirds vote.
So it'd be a ballot measure?
Ralph, is it a ballot measure, how that works?
So the property owner, so when you form a district, the property owner is the landowner. And as long as there are less than 12 voters within the property, then they can do a landowner election. And they do actually provide a ballot. A ballot's provided to them, and they do vote to put the tax in place.
Thank you.
I have a question for Ralph. Could you give us maybe a few communities that are using these programs in California, just as an example?
Sure. The city of Elk Grove would be an example, the county of Placer, the city of Roseville, the city of Rancho Cordova, the city of Galt would be another one, the county of Sacramento. I can pull up more for you if you'd like, or I can provide them to your staff to provide to you.
No, that's enough. That way our public has the ability to know that we're not a guinea pig in this process. It sounds like there's quite a few that are ahead of us in participation, so I appreciate knowing those cities. Thank you.
We're not blazing this trail, though.
No. All right. Any other questions from council or direction?
Are there any drawbacks to this?
None that I could find so far. I mean, we did look around. There's, at the end of the projects, there's one, someone in Yuba had said that there's a little bit of administrative work to do, but it's, it's an opportunity for the city to be able to review the paperwork before the bonds are released, before the funding is released, before we accept the street, if we're accepting the street, that kind of thing. So it's, so it actually, to me, it seems more like a protection, but it is, could be a little bit of work for staff.
All right. So it's administrative costs?
Correct. Right.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I actually Googled and asked that question, and I came up with nothing, which is super rare. It's like, wow, nobody has anything bad to say? It was a little actually surprising. But with that, perhaps maybe Ralph would have an answer to this. Does this put us in a more competitive with other communities? And then how would that stack up with some of the cities you already mentioned, Roseville or Elk Grove, I believe, and some of the others?
I think that the interest that the developers have been showing, I mean, it's strong interest. The, I feel like it's, it does give us a competitive advantage, because if they now can pay for their infrastructure and they can pay for their fees, I mean, and when they pay for the fees, it's not just like they pay from, over time, they don't ask for any deferrals. They just pay the fees, so we would just get all the fees right up front.
Great.
We have another, I think, is James on the call also, Kayla? I don't know if James would like to answer to any of those. Ralph is with the skip program and James is with the BOLD program. There's slight differences.
I'm actually with the BOLD program.
I'm sorry. Sorry, Ralph. I got that backwards.
No problem.
I have a thought, and it's only a question I don't really need an answer to, but we have a particular area in the city that has a non-public road, and I'm thinking off the end of Elgin. And I'm wondering if this program might be a way to help that particular problem. And I'm not looking for a yes or no, but I think that at least this might have a mechanism or a tool that might be capable of.
It's subject to voter approval?
Yeah, and the owners would be the voters to that approval.
Right.
Okay. I just, it's a nice new tool and toolbox to help. That project down there is, got immense complexities. I'm sure Janet, you're well aware of it.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. So I, I mean, I see this as a possible solution to that dilemma. Okay, any other questions? And we've got to provide direction. What's the council's?
We do have to have a public hearing for it, right?
Okay. Well, a public hearing, yeah. Open. Any speakers on this particular item? Looking out in the audience? Seeing none? Okay.
I just wanted to note, no public speaker cards were received either.
Thank you. I was going to ask. So then we close the public hearing, and now we're going to look at council to have direction. Councilman Goodson, are you still up? My question?
So it's our understanding that there's going to be an impact to our administrative staff. How much time and what specific staff would we be using? Who would be assigned?
It would be most likely.
Don't say Amy.
No, it's not Amy. It would most likely be.
She's overworked and underpaid.
Engineering staff, and they're not here to defend themselves, so. Just engineer, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Do we need a motion for this, or just?
Just direction?
I think a motion with the direction, it would be fine.
Yeah, I motion that we direct the city administrator to enter a JPA agreement with CSCDA and the CMFA agencies.
Can I clarify that? I'm sorry.
Sure.
I'm sorry. We are already members of the JPAs for both of these. What we have to do tonight is pass the resolutions so that allows us to participate in these specific programs.
Okay.
I motion that we pass the resolutions for participation in these specific programs.
As attached to the agenda.
Thank you.
Second. All right. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Johnstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pittman?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. And it just so happens we're at 5:15 for the next public hearing, which is the modifications to the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Owner Occupied Rehabilitation Loan Program Guidelines.
Yes, Caitlin.
Yes, Caitlin Larson, our program analyst with the Housing Department's going to present this public hearing.
Welcome, Caitlin.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Pittman and council members. This public hearing is a citizen participation requirement set forth by the state Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG. Whenever there is a proposed change to any program guidelines, staff is required to conduct a public hearing for input from our citizens. Tonight, staff is seeking direction from the council regarding a significant modification to the CDBG Owner Occupied Rehabilitation Program Guidelines that would reduce the interest rate for each new loan from 3% simple interest to 0% interest. In this case, only the principal balance would be due at repayment. The Loan Advisory Committee suggested this change for a period of five years, then to be reevaluated. This scenario was discussed during a housing loan advisory meeting to encourage more homeowners to make improvements to their properties. Last year, the city received approximately $63,873 in rehab interest payments. This included monthly payments and a few payoffs. Last year, we had 16 active rehabilitation loans accruing interest, but we currently have six that equate to about $1,700 per month. The balance of the six loans is $192,704. These funds are deposited into a revolving loan fund that can be used for CDBG eligible activities and to pay for staff time for administering the activities. Additionally, staff is asking the council to consider reducing the three repayment options to two options. Currently, our guidelines allow three payment options that are determined by the applicant's housing expense ratio and their ability to pay. These options include a fully amortized payment of principal and interest, and interest-only payment, and a deferred payment of five years, whereafter staff will reevaluate the homeowner's income and ability to pay. Staff is recommending two payment options, a fully amortized payment, or a deferred until title transfer. These two payment options are allowable by CDBG and would simplify the process of loan portfolio management. Currently, the city's owner occupied rehabilitation program is only funded with CDBG grant funds. These funds will expire at the end of May 2024. At that point, we will have extremely limited or no funding for the program. Because these funds are expiring soon, staff no longer feels that reducing the interest rate to 0% is imperative to the success of the program, and is recommending that it remain at 3%.
Council questions? Councilman Goodson, you're up.
Yes, I was just curious, was it found that there was a significant number of homeowners that were just struggling to pay back that 3% loan, right?
No.
What, what was it? What?
We were trying to just garner more interest in the program. We were having a very difficult time getting applicants.
And also, some of our senior applicants were concerned about the cost to pay back. So, we were looking for ways to really try to get the program going, be able to expend more funding. And this was an idea that came up from a couple of different staff members. So, we thought we would take it to the loan advisory and get their opinion, and they, they did at that time want to reduce it as a trial. But considering the fact that we are, we've already have applications, we're currently working on five that will have completed by the end of the, the grant expiration term, and we're not accepting any more applications because we just don't have time to complete them. I don't think at this time it's necessary to do that. But we are still asking to change the repayment options, because right now, it's difficult to manage. It's not, we're not enabled to do it, it's just more difficult.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yeah, so, have we had any defaults with this program?
There've been defaults in the past. We haven't had any in recent years, not even the past five years. But it's more so with our first-time homebuyer program.
Okay, yeah. Because, you know, I just think in terms of that 3%, as we know in this current climate, and even in the past climate, when it was good, that was, that's a great rate.
Right.
And I, I just don't see that 3% being a big deterrent. I think it's more messaging, or accessibility, or, you know, people, eligibility, you know, I think that those are probably far more challenging than the 3%, which to me is super attractive if you're looking...
Agreed.
To, yeah.
Yeah.
I just don't see that as the barrier. I think there are other things that are an issue, you know, with that.
Okay.
I'd like to piggyback off of that. I'm just thinking, there's, not every homeowner has pride of ownership as well. And so, not everybody wants to do upgrades.
In terms of the loan, are there requirements on what the money is spent for? In other words, is, you know, major things like a roof, or a wall, or whatever?
And the main concern is health and safety issues. There, the majority of the loan must be used for those kinds of upgrades. There's, I believe, a 15%, 15% of the loan can be used if it's left over in the budget for luxury items, like new countertops, or...
They're actually not luxury items, they're not allowable, but they're general items of construction, so.
So, do people, homeowners usually step up to the plate when they have code enforcement violations? Because you mentioned safety, when they become a, a safety challenge.
We have not had, I don't think any of our applicants have had open violations with code enforcement, none that are going through the program right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions over here? I'm looking, because I know things aren't working. The other comment I have is, with the insurance crisis hitting our communities, I know that many of the policies are reducing down to just bare minimums. So, I, you know, I see this as a possible outlet for someone that has a problem, that damaged the house, like just recent windstorm, and roofs destroyed. I don't know how much the insurance companies are going to cover, because they're, some, most policies are doing non-renewals to us. So, I see this as a viable program for that particular candidate that is having a difficulty for that. The other one is, is, and I mentioned this to the city administrator, you know, if you have a sewer line problem in the city, the property owners in the city are required to take the line lateral to the main in the street, and that can be very, very expensive. So, I see this as a great program for that issue, that, you know, unbeknownst to them, they have to dig up the street. And that's the responsibility of the property owner. So, these loans would be available for that type of activity.
Yes, the sewer laterals can, can be included for these loans.
So, it's certainly a viable program to have. I don't know, I think it's a kind of a what-if, you know? I don't know if there, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. So, this is a what-if, right? So, we're basically, you are just requesting to keep the 3% as is right now, and then, should we get more funding, would we revisit it, or we're just saying, keep it as it is?
My recommendation is to keep it as it is.
But make it more simple for management.
But change the repayment options to two.
Okay.
So, we would not need to adopt the resolution in that situation?
Um, what does my resolution say?
It's saying, yeah, it's saying it's an and/or.
Yeah.
Okay. So, or.
I like the or.
Just want to make sure our ors are, are ors.
I like the or.
Yeah, let's do the or.
Yes.
I like that.
Let's do the or.
All right. Well, that's, that's the issue now. I need to open up a public hearing about this to give the public a chance? So, we have an open public hearing for this issue of item number 12. Any public wishing to comment on this program? Any cards?
None received.
All right. Seeing none, the public hearing's closed. Council, what's your prevalent?
I motion...
Go ahead.
I motion that we keep the loan program at 3% with two repayment options, solely amortize or deferred until title transfer.
Motion second. Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Johnstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pittman?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. And now, item number, was, was it 5:15, it's now at 5:25, is the first reading of the amendment of the Oroville Municipal Code, Section 17.16.150, Mobile Food Vending. There he is, Wes. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. In the last year, the city has been approached by two developers interested in creating sites for multiple food trucks, often termed food court or food truck village. We're also aware that there are now several sites in our city that have multiple trucks in them, two or three regularly set up. Oroville currently regulates individual trucks and has no regulations to cover sites with more than one vendor. So, staff have developed the proposed ordinance before you this evening. We've engaged Mark, Lark McNeil of Interwest Consulting, who's worked on this issue with several other jurisdictions, and she's on Zoom to outline the proposed ordinance. The planning commission is recommending approval, and we expect there to be several comments on this this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Wes?
Lark?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, mayor and city council members. Beginning on page 224 of the year packet this evening, is the first reading of a proposed ordinance regarding mobile food vending villages. For ease in presentation, I will refer to mobile food vending vehicles as food trucks, although mobile food vendors do include more or other different types of vehicles. This is a staff-initiated ordinance in response to the interests that Wes had just outlined to you. The current city ordinance regarding mobile food vendors contains very few regulations for multiple food trucks at one site at one time. It is staff's hope that this ordinance before you will allow mobile food vending villages to become part of the economic diversity which is taking place in the city of Oroville. The proposed ordinance defines the number and regulates mobile food trucks on a site at one time. I personally believe that the most important part of this ordinance is the definition of mobile food vending villages, which is two or more food vending vehicles at one site at one time. And that's based on my personal experience of 25 years working as a local agency planner. Code enforcement was part of my responsibility, and I urge you to, for clarity, to make it easier for your code enforcement staff to have a clear definition of one, or, excuse me, two or more mobile food vendors at a site at one time. Unfortunately, I can go into further information on that if you want later. In drafting this ordinance, staff was mindful of the importance that the downtown commercial district plays. This ordinance does not allow mobile food vending villages in the downtown mixed-use district, which is, which runs approximately east from Lincoln Street, west, excuse me, east from Lincoln Street to Washington Street, and roughly north from Park Avenue to Arlen-Rine Drive. This ordinance establishes simple regulations to protect adjacent properties from trespass and litter. The ordinance allows the zoning administrator, who is the entity who would be acting on the minor conditional use permit, to establish a mobile food vending village on site. It allows the zoning administrator flexibility in determining the parking surface of the site. It allows he or she to require permanent or temporary barriers, which would help keep people from moving from one property to the other. We're trying to avoid creating trespass and littering incidences in the city adjacent to mobile food vending villages. A member of the public had requested the planning commission to alter the definition of mobile food vending villages to four or more mobile food vehicles at a time to constitute a mobile food vending village. As I mentioned earlier, I had to do code enforcement as part of my job for 25 years, and the easier you can make it for the, your staff to enforce your regulations, the easier it will be for them to keep the city's ordinances in place. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Lark? Questions from the council? Seeing none?
I do have...
Oh, sorry, I didn't, didn't, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, I didn't see that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just briefly, when it comes to events, you know, because obviously, we have multiple events in Oroville, is there any impact, or is there any discussion within this ordinance about special events where you have multiple food trucks, obviously, coming together?
This ordinance does not regulate any city-sponsored mobile food vending village or event.
So, when you say, just the term sponsor, the city sometimes just, it's an application, it's an approval, it's not necessarily sponsored. So, you know, so a nonprofit organization, you know, is putting on an event, you know, like Feather Feast-a-days, for an example, or Salmon Festival, I know an organization that runs that. So, how might that impact, if, if at all?
Food trucks are subsumed under the permit that the organization, the primary organization gets, so.
It's covered.
It's covered.
All right. Okay. So, essentially, my understanding is our ordinance has really lacked having any definition or discussion of this particular category. So, that's essentially what we're doing here, is adding this to our inventory of ordinances so that we can properly provide for these activities. Is that an accurate assumption?
Very accurate.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from council? Then I look like I have to open the public hearing for this particular item. It's open for the first reading of the amendment of the Oroville Municipal Code, 17.16.150, Mobile Food Vending. Any public wishing to speak on this item during this public hearing?
Yes, there are some speaker cards, sir. We will begin with Scott Hubbard and follow that with Rob Rodney.
Okay. Mr. Hubbard, welcome.
My pleasure. Mr. Mayor, council, I am spearheading the food truck village. So, if you have any particular questions regarding it, I'd be more than happy to answer them before I begin, having not had any. I would just point out that the reason I suggested four or more vehicles for the food truck villages, as I explained in my letter, two vehicles did not make a village. We have a number of already two or three locations on the premises, or, excuse me, in the city of Oroville that have not had any problems. And so, I think it's looking for adding a, an added layer of regulation to people who are already doing okay, just seemed a little excessive to me. I would also point out that while I can certainly appreciate the difficulty in code enforcement on ascertaining when you have two or more vehicles on a piece of property, what this regulation ignores is you can't, they don't know what the property boundaries are. You could have a location such as Rayleigh Shopping Center that might have five or six parcels in one particular shopping center. Now, code enforcement might be able to count two or three, or even four, mobile food trucks on that particular parcel, but they would have a difficult time determining without a law degree, a background in real estate, or even access to the assessor's records, on whether or not it all is located on one parcel. This regulation does not address that particular issue. The last point I'd like to make is that I ran, I own the Rockin' Brews in Sacramento, and I also did food trucks on, at the state fair. So, I understand both sides of this particular debate. And one of the points that I made in my letter that I must stress here is that asphalt and chip sealing is probably the worst hard surface you can have for any food truck, because in the summertime, it's going to absorb heat. If you look over at our lot, in the corner, Home Depot, you see that we use gravel and road base, which infinitely better. It absorbs the water, it creates a hard-packed surface. So, requiring asphalt as the default hard surface, I would strongly encourage you not to go that route. Leave it blank, if anything else. Just say, hard surface as determined by the zoning administrator. Don't make asphalt and chip seal the default position. Don't make asphalt and chip seal the default position. Any other questions?
Staff actually concurs with that last recommendation.
Thank you, Wes. Since I have 15 seconds, can I say Wes has been a superstar in this entire process, he and his team? I expressed my thank in my letter. I want to do it in person. Wes, thank you for everything you've done to make this project a reality.
All right. Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Up next, we have Rob Rodney, followed by Brian Wong.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If I might.
Sure.
Yeah. He was pointing out that identifying a particular APN or boundaries versus an address. So the point of that public comment, is that, is that a potential challenge for us to regulate?
We don't necessarily, what we need is permission from the property owner for that truck to be on that property. If it's multiple parcels, let's say it's, it's a shopping center with, with several parcels, usually the management company for that shopping center would provide the, the permission.
Yeah, because I did notice, you know, looking at our APNs, we do, we do have that situation here, so.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Rodney.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. Thank you for your time this evening. Thanks for serving our great city of Oroville and the great people that, that live here. I was hoping that, that this is going to be the agenda item. I came here to discuss food trucks as it is, and so this is where they plugged me in. And so the villages, you know, I don't think I'm necessarily opposed to if they're in, you know, certain areas and whatnot, but I'm sure, sure hoping that there's some consideration into the, the limitation of, you know, food trucks in our community. Over the last few years, it seems like, you know, a number of food trucks have come to our community, and one of our, my concerns is, you know, code enforcement and whatnot. And I'm sure that there's great code enforcement that's taking place, but it just seems like, you know, just as an example, I drove through Oroville at 2:00 PM on Friday, and there were five food trucks on the, you know, on Orodam Boulevard. And, and I was like, wow, this is, it seems like they're just popping up everywhere. We've been in the community since 1969, have invested in the brick and mortar, you know, huge investments, 20-year commitments with Taco Bell, corporate, and, you know, the city, state, and whatnot, paying our taxes and doing what, what we can with close to 90 employees, hopefully that, you know, keep their income here. And these food trucks, I'm hoping there's consideration as to where they're coming from, who's operating these, and then, you know, and of course, keeping our, our public safe. The, so, so if I was to sum up everything today, since I have limited time, if, if there's consideration to the limit of food trucks that are in our community, be it in a village or be it, you know, just on the main drag of Orodam or wherever else, I would hope that, you know, that we consider that. And then the, of course, the enforcement, that, you know, if they're showing up at 5:00 in the evening, you know, is enforcement. I don't, I don't know exactly the times that they go and enforce, you know, those food trucks, but, and of course, and anytime I see a food truck, I'm always looking, okay, what are they serving? And I see a lot of them serving tacos, and of course, that's our direct competition. But anyway, we're, we're hopefully here to stay for a long period of time, and we thank you so much for the privilege to speak today and, you know, on behalf of food trucks, and please, yeah, give that some consideration as to the limit of what you allow in the community. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
What was your name again, please?
Yes, Rob Rodney. I'm one of the owners of the Taco Bells. A couple other owners are here as well, so thank you.
I think that's an excellent question you just posed. Is there an answer, Wes, in regards to, is there a maximum allotment of this type of vendors?
I don't know. Lark, did you want to address this? If not, I will.
No, I'd be happy to, Wes. In our first presentation to the planning commission, I had asked the planning commission if they did want to limit the number of food truck villages in the community. They expressed no interest in doing so, so this ordinance does not place a limit on the number of food truck vending villages in the community. The council is free, of course, to set a limit if they so wish.
Thank you.
We did look at other communities and how they, whether they set caps or limits. None of them set a number limit. Many of them, Elk Grove, Modesto, Rancho Cordova, Sacramento, their restrictions tend to be limiting to specific locations or limiting trucks to be certain distances from each other and from other, other food establishments. So those are, those are limitations that are not in this ordinance at this time, but certainly could be.
Is it okay to comment?
Yeah, well, I do have a comment.
Okay, thanks.
I grew up in Sacramento, so I understand. It's a totally different geographical dynamic. You have tripled the population size of Oroville alone in Elk Grove, Roseville, Rockland, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't know if that's a qualifier for me. That's just me.
All right. Wes, I have a question in regards to the number. I know like for fireworks permits, we limit the amount based upon a per capita population. Did any of the cities have such an arrangement for that? In other words, your population and how many food truck vendors are in place?
Not to my knowledge. We regulate not only fireworks vendors, but smoke shops in that, in that way as well.
Maybe, maybe talk, go ahead.
I saw Smith on the line here, so.
Yeah, just something that's kind of nine in the back of my mind, given the change in minimum wage, that is a huge issue for brick and mortar, and we haven't seen the full impact of how that's going to wash out. So I have a little bit of concern, I think, and though you didn't bring that up, but you have 60 employees, and obviously, I say obviously, most likely, a food truck is not subject to that, and most of them are small-time momma-pop operators, and the competitive edge that is given, obviously, you don't have all of the typical costs associated that brick and mortar have to, you know, or challenge with. And now with this additional layer of, you know, that's a huge jump. So I have a little bit of concern, just because we haven't had this kind of wash out yet as far as how that's all going to roll moving forward. So I am kind of interested in perhaps some kind of, you know, control where we just don't have this kind of just, you know, here they, you know, we have this, you know, moving forward, and here they roll in, you know, 100 trucks coming Oroville all of a sudden. So that could be devastating.
Absolutely. If you build it, they'll come.
Wes, you have a comment?
Most of our restaurants, fast food, drive-throughs, et cetera, that would be direct competitors to these food trucks are along Orodam Boulevard. It might be possible to consider limiting the number of trucks along that stretch, even over to Olive Highway, a little bit past the hospital there. So that's a possibility as well. That's, that's up to the council.
Okay. Councilman Thompson?
Is there, is there currently any limitations on the number of food trucks coming into Oroville?
No, no. All, all are required to have a mobile food vendor license already. Not all of them do, and so code, code enforcement does have significant work that they do in the area of food trucks and making sure they have their health, health certificates, et cetera, et cetera.
So I don't, I don't necessarily see by, because this specifically is regarding food truck villages or areas where, you know, more than four?
Two.
Two.
Two can gather and be together. So I don't necessarily see, you know, us doing this can, going to see a bunch come to town, but. I think it's a different, you know, our family, both are patrons to Taco Bell. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Uh, yeah.
We love Taco.
And as well, we, you know, we visit the mobile food trucks. For us, it's apples and oranges. It's not, you know, even though it's, both of them are a similar type of food, but to me, it's not the same. So sometimes you want Taco Bell, and sometimes you want something else. But, but yeah, I mean, I, I get it. I'm, for me, I'm, I'm definitely a free market person, so I do like the idea. I've seen other communities that have the food truck villages, and they definitely are kind of a younger kind of crowd, I guess all crowds, but the, definitely the college-age, young adult age seems to like those a lot more lately. So I'm in favor of doing whatever we can to help to monitor and keep our communities safe and encourage more business.
Okay. Anyone else down there? I'm looking around. Chrissy or?
So my question, yeah, I do have a question. On the mobile food court, are we going to be, I don't recall reading anywhere in here where we're, are we going to be requiring all of the food trucks to be, to go to this court?
No.
So it's this court plus any additional ones that want to be wherever else?
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay. All right. I think we should continue with the public hearing. We have other speakers, but Mr. Councilman Goodson?
So I'm going to play devil's advocate now. And so I believe not just Montgomery, but in the near future, Orodam is going to be a gateway to, that we want to be proud of. And so, because I live here, and when I get off onto Orodam, I see, and it's just, continues to grow food trucks, every gas station, every empty parking, and, you know, vacant area. So I personally, I would like to see a limit to, to that type of activity coming into town.
All right. Thank you, Rodney. We have another speaker.
Thank you very much.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Brian Wong.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. I expressed a lot of sentiments last time in the last meeting about this topic already. So anyway, I, I just want to add that we should really consider putting a cap on the amount of food trucks that we should have in our community. We're a very small community within city limits. We're still under 20,000 people, so when we do a food establishment, we got to look at our support structure on how many mouths that we can feed at any one time. So when we have like, you know, don't have a cap there, then it's like, well, we're open to all this composition, I mean, competition. And it's just not fair for like, you know, some of the good operators in town, like Taco Bell's. Like, right now, we don't have mandates for like a minimum wage, but, you know, in a few months, if it goes up to $22, that's not something that, you know, that's a level playing field for everybody. How can you survive on such a high minimum wage? And when you go up 50 cents, I can understand that you can try and adjust, but when you go up a few dollars, you know, that's going to put, you know, a lot of businesses at risk, and that's what our state's doing. So with that said, I've talked to a friend up in Paradise, and he talked about their food trucks up there, because after the fire up there, there were a lot of people from outside of the area going into Paradise, setting up food trucks for the workers and everything else. Well, that was not a solution for Paradise, he said, because all the people went in, some of them didn't like get the proper permitting, so a lot of the sales taxes weren't registered with Paradise. Paradise did not benefit from that. So what happened was Paradise cracked down, and they made it stricter, they, you know, stepped up the code enforcement, so now the people that are up there are mainly from Paradise, and all those sales revenues, taxes go back into Paradise.
Right.
So anyway, those are my comments tonight, and really seriously consider like capping the number of food trucks we have in our city. I don't have any problems with the, the food truck village. I think it's a great idea, but the question is, well, how many should we allow in our city? What's the upper cap? We're definitely not Sacramento. I mean, I was down in LA having a great time eating at some of the food trucks. It's huge down there. They got millions of people. Different story than what we have here. We're in the tens of thousands, not millions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Tracy.
So Brian brings up a good point on regulating sales tax. A lot of these food, a lot of the current food trucks only accept cash. So there's no way to regulate sales tax, there's no way to regulate, you know, income that is due to the city.
Right.
So that, that is a concern that I've been having. You know, not that I, I don't, you know, I'm for enterprise and, and, you know, small businesses, but it's taken away from, you know, the city income.
Wesley, have a comment?
As well as competition, so.
Maybe.
Hmm? It may be.
It may be, okay. It may be.
I believe chapter five of our city ordinances does require food trucks and other retailers to pay sales tax for the point of sale. And I'm a, a small business, and my wife and I do file our sales tax for wherever the point of sale is, depending on where we are. So that is supposed to occur. It, it doesn't necessarily always occur, so.
There's no, I don't see any way of reg-
Who monitors that? Who monitors that?
State franchise tax.
So are we on the merit system?
Pretty much.
That's my concern.
Okay. Next item, or any speakers?
I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Speakers.
I have one more comment.
Sir, go ahead.
Up to you.
I think my only concern regarding, I guess, the wait on staff and regarding limiting the number on this issue specifically because the fact that mobile food trucks are mobile by nature, some of them being from out of town, and so if you have, you know, a certain number that's capped, and a certain percentage of those are from not the area, they mobile, they come in, they come out, they go to different cities, you know, and then you are stopped as far as having new businesses town, so you may only have, you know, you have 30 licenses, you have five current active mobile food trucks, you know, and somebody else local wants to start a food truck, but they can't function in our town because there's, there's limited number, but some of those were in business last year, and now they're not in business or they moved away. You know, it's a little different than a brick and mortar where it's there and it's established, as opposed to these guys that may have only been in town for a couple weeks for the salmon festival. They got a business license, but the reality is they're out of Sacramento, and they're not planning to come back until next year. So this makes a lot of complications for our staff on maybe keeping up the tabs as far as which mobile food trucks are still active, which aren't active, and all that jazz to, to, I mean, we, anyway, so I just see a lot of issues if we want to. I see the, the challenge of taxes, taking business, compet, competition, all that on the same side. You know, again, some of these guys are mobile, and they're only going to be in town for a limited amount of time, and so. I'm definitely in favor of the mobile food truck village. Why is that for me a tongue, tongue twister?
Yes.
Rubber baby buggy bumpers. Mobile food truck village. You know, I, I picture mobile food truck village not as something that looks, you know, ugly. I've seen them, you know, rutting. When they opened one downtown, it was really popular, it was really celebrated, it was a really great place for people to gather, have different options. You can bring your family there, somebody can get barbecue, somebody else can get Hispanic food, or whatever it is that you may want down there and eat the middle of the pick and tables and whatnot. So anyway, so absolutely for the village, absolutely for, for doing we can to keep our community safe, but it's, it's, you know, we sure are discussing this quite a bit. Do we can to protect it. We love our community. Love the union, Taco Bell, you know, the different restaurants we have in town, because they are amazing, so.
City Attorney looks like he has a comment.
Yeah, just to respond to Councilmember Goodson's question, the collection and enforcement of sales and use taxes is conducted by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. It's a division of the state.
Okay. Vice Mayor Smith, are you back on the queue?
You stalled my thunder there on part of that. But, and really, that's incumbent upon that agency then to, of course, distribute the, the, collect the tax appropriately, just like with Amazon or any of those other items. And just thinking in terms of now that this, assuming this goes into play, and I'm also a free market, you know, concept as well, but, you know, of course, doing it smartly, and, and I think an ordinance of this type then does give us more regulatory oversight, perhaps, you know, when it comes to inspections or those types of things. But just to follow up then again with the number and regulating that, then our zoning ordinances, then Wes can play into as far as where they go, how many can go, that type of things. Within, within our zoning, wouldn't that then have some sort of regulatory or oversight allowances? Giving you additional tools as far as, you know?
Giving you additional tools as far as, you know, handling that.
The food truck village uh does require a minor use permit, so that does require sending out a notice to the neighbors uh to, to the area uh for, for them to have the opportunity to comment. Uh, it's an administrative permit without public comment for individual food trucks. Uh, they just have to show us where they're gonna set up their commissary at night, you know, where they're gonna plug in at night to keep all the food safe and everything, uh, and where they're gonna set up. They're, they're supposed to show us that. So um, that's, that's the administrative permit that we process.
So just in looking for clarification, then, so it's triggering a conditional use permit, but you're saying it's purely administrative. You said one, a one truck, but what about the village?
One truck is administrative.
But the village is-
The village is a minor use permit.
And then would that go through planning then?
Yes, absolutely.
With a minor use, so then there's still opportunity then for uh some regulatory oversight and/or pushback, uh, and then they potential know that's not gonna work in that location.
Correct.
So it's just not, we're not, this isn't gonna create a rubber stamp where we have the hundred trucks, as I mentioned earlier, just rolling into town all of a sudden. There's still some opportunity to have this discussion among, with the public.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilman Goodson?
Yes, do we have a location? Have, I haven't heard anybody talk about a location, and that's where you would come in, Mr. Hubbard.
It's on the corner of Third and Nelson, at the Home Depot lot, right there, that vacant lot. And we did have um at the DRC and then the Planning Commission, we, we've had conversations throughout uh with, um, I'm sorry.
Scott.
Thank you, Hubbard. Yeah, Mr. Hubbard here, um, about uh the, the lot, how it would be treated, so the conversation we was having earlier about the gravel, we agreed that the gravel was okay. It was just that we didn't want it to be dirt, and then the trucks going in and out, the vehicles going in and out, and, and putting, bringing dirt out onto the street.
Yeah.
Where would the approach be, and how will that be set up so that it can be safe? So those are all things that we can mitigate while we're, while we're looking at this. And then it, and then to Wes's point earlier, this is right next to the Home Depot, so the Home Depot, I think that you already spoke to the Home Depot. The Home Depot didn't want them parking on their lot, so they were, so they were already involved in this process as well, so there's that lot that, that he's looking at, has plenty of space for their customers to park and for the food, for the, for the food trucks to park as well. So it did, so through the process, there is an opportunity for us to look at all of these things and determine if it's a good fit or not. And then, and if it is a good fit, how it works so that it functions properly.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? I uh, I'm kinda hearing it might be consensus on an idea of what Wes, your suggestion about on so many uh food trucks on Oro Dam Boulevard. Um, I kinda like that thought because of the congestion that'd be created. We have the busiest street in town, and we already have congestion problems there. It's probably the most accident-prone section of our roadway in Oroville. If you look at accidents, the, the dots per accident line up almost a solid line, so uh I might be interested in seeing a limit to that particular roadway for the amount of food trucks, because they do require uh that. But that doesn't change this ordinance. That would be a zoning ordinance, correct?
There's uh two ways this could go. You could um not pass this this evening and send it back and ask us to research that and figure out what a suggested limit might be on Oro Dam Boulevard. Or you could enact this ordinance uh tonight with the instruction that we go back and research and come back with a, a suggested limitation and maybe um modify the ordinance.
This is the first reading.
I'd like to.
Okay.
So, go ahead.
My apologies, Mr. Mayor. I mentioned to Mr. Wes beside me that this is a first reading rather than a second, so you would not be adopting tonight, but um it would come back with changes that you would direct, and uh absent any other substantive changes, that would be your second reading and adoption at that point.
I, I kinda like that idea, because I think, you know, the congestion issue on Oro Dam is significant, uh, and I might suggest, I know I recently visited Washington, and if you ever go down Washington along that main boulevard, there must be thirty food trucks on the roadway there to feed, and you might contact them as to what their type of regulation is per mile or whatever it is, because they're packed bumper to bumper there for almost two blocks, so. As an idea, I think that'd be great for us to consider, because we don't wanna add any more congestion to a roadway we already have congestion on, and, and otherwise, I think the, this whole idea of food village idea is a great idea. It's a nice way for investors to come to our community, so.
Did you?
What do you think?
Did you wanna include uh Olive Highway as well?
Yeah, I, I'd say Olive Highway and Oro Dam are most congested roadways, so.
Right. And it's gonna be even more congested once that hospital opens up.
Basically, we're looking at Highway one sixty-two through the community. Probably be the simplest thing to do. That way, it, it gives us a thing, and we don't wanna throw more congestion than we already have there. I know Caltrans is not gonna alleviate us anytime soon. I, last time I had a talk with them, it was twenty years before they had any major plans on expansion of that roadway, so all we can hope for is new pavement. Vice Mayor Smith?
Yeah, just, do we also need a modification for the pavement issue?
Yes, uh, the suggestion would be on page two thirty-two, item four, uh, to change um that the uh all vendors will be parked on uh paved or chip sealed or surface acceptable to the zoning administrator.
So how, would you like that to read, Vice Mayor Smith?
Just as Wes stated, it's perfect.
So moved.
All right. So we've had a public hearing, and it looks like we've got some items that we'd like to see in the next reading of it. Any other comments?
To be, to be clear, I wanna make sure, Wes, you have a clear direction on, on the uh, the limitations, it's just on basically one sixty-two? Is that where the limitations are desired?
Yeah, I think so.
Further limitations.
Further limitations, correct.
What we'll do is, is study that, study the situation, find out how many trucks there are now, uh, discover whether we think there might be conflicts with uh brick and mortar stores, uh, maybe there are some spots along there that uh would be good candidates for a food truck village, perhaps. Uh, we know that there's multiple food trucks up where the barbecue one is, up, up, Olive farther up, uh, but uh we might come up with several suggestions um for, for the second reading.
And I think it's pretty much consensus. We're not trying to limit them, but we just wanna cap how many are there to alleviate congestion, because we certainly are in support of them being there. Just how many is the question, so. Vice Mayor Smith?
Uh, so make a res-
Go ahead.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we uh accept the first reading of an amendment of the Oroville Municipal Code, section seventeen point sixteen point one five zero, mobile food truck vending with receiving from staff um additional modifications for limitation of uh food truck courts on the one sixty-two corridor. Additionally, they will bring back uh new language as to the type of pavement surface, whether it's paved, chipped, sealed, or other types of surfaces as uh they see uh necessary.
And I'm sorry, uh, Mayor Smith, if I may, it appears as though the action um to adopt resolution nine two one five uh did not get carried over onto the agenda, however, it was published in our public comment packet. Um, so if we could have that motion as well and seconded, then we can continue as that correct. Thank you.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Call roll.
Councilmember Johnstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pittman?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, so now we return, we've closed the public hearing with direction given, and then we move back to item number five, is that?
Yes.
Just a little item?
Yes.
And this item is under regular business, and I'll title it, "The Award to Contract to LeMans Construction Incorporated for State Route one sixty-two ATP Pedestrian Mobility and Safety Improvement Project." Correct?
That is correct. So uh, like to give a little bit of a history of this. This project was uh began in early twenty fifteen when everything was starting to uh to develop. June of twenty twenty-three of this year, the design work was finally developed. Uh, we went out for bid in early uh September, we closed in December, and we've received one bid from Lehman Construction for the amount of six million two hundred ninety-nine and three hundred dollars. Staff is asking for you guys to approve not to exceed amount of seven million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the fifteen percent uh contingency fund built into it. Um, this project is gonna be very transferring, formal, uh, formative for the one sixty-two corridor, ironically enough for just speaking about it. It's going to eliminate all the sidewalk gaps, high-visibility crosswalk at Spencer, it's called a HAWK device, where it has a high-visibility lights, there'll be storm drain improvements, and uh many other facets. It's gonna be a huge improvement for the mobility for the citizens of Oroville, and that goes just west of Highway seventy all the way up to Foothill Boulevard. The fiscal impact is, we've identified what I would call three buckets of money. Um, bucket one will be LTF, SB one, and RTIP monies, uh, and DWR for one point seven million. Bucket two is, we are gonna use our traffic impact fees of two point one million dollars. And bucket three is a three point four million dollars, and that's the ATP funds that we awarded from the state uh some years back. By using our impact traffic fees of the two point one, it's actually gonna save about one point two million for our Measure U funds that we could use at a, on a different project, uh, preferably for roadways, um, some type of other uh priority. So i- it's a, a great opportunity, and we are asking that you uh direct the city administrator and staff to award the construction for Lehman Construction. To that point, we're, we're hoping construction will start uh late spring, early summer, really driven on the weather. We can't, if we have another couple of weekends like we just did, I might postpone it, but uh we're hoping to get this thing fully implemented and going in early summer. Caltrans is planning to start their construction early summer of twenty twenty-five, so it's pretty well programmed in there, so once ours is done, Caltrans will be starting up, and they're doing repaving, striping, and some other improvements as well, new signal lights, and uh some street lighting as well. It's gonna be a wonderful project.
Sounds like it.
Any questions?
Yeah, if I, if I could add this really quick, just to, to summarize, it's a, obviously, this is a, this started again back in twenty fifteen, and the costs have obviously risen since twenty fifteen, but uh staff done a great job, I think, getting creative with the, the ways to fund this project, and we did budget some money, some Measure U dollars, into the budget this year, and by using traffic impact fees, it's gonna be a great way to divert some of those dollars that can be, as Fred mentioned, further used on another project, or um, you know, if, if, we'll see how the, the year end unfolds, if we carry any of those dollars over, they can become um an option for you to choose other priorities in the next fiscal year, so. Um, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a, a big deal. This is the, this is the first, the first phase, and then obviously, and after this, in twenty twenty-five, I believe Caltrans will be coming through and doing a full road replacement, so.
That's what-
It's gonna be, there's gonna be a lot of construction going on over there in the next two summers.
Yes. One sixty-two is gonna be very busy, like, like Brian was saying, for the next two years, and.
Vice Mayor Smith has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, and to that, that's kind of, I, more of a comment, um, just over the, being now in this position for five years, uh, sometimes you have certain assumptions, that government just works a certain way, and, and then it sometimes doesn't meet expectations, or at least perceived expectations. So this is, project's gonna have huge impacts on traffic flow, inconvenience, and so, uh, Mr. Mayo, um, who's gonna be monitoring these guys to make sure that, you know, they're on it? Because in a lot of these road projects, man, you know, you just watch social media, people are just going crazy because of just things that weren't thought well through, you know, thought through completely as far as impacts and all of that, so I'm just kinda, so when they start screaming on uh social media?
They're gonna blame me, of course, but.
Of course. So I just-
And so are we.
So, so a lot of this project, Mr. Smith, is uh, we'll be lucky that it's gonna be sidewalk gutter improvements, where we will be utilizing the shoulder as much as practical, and being able to shift traffic over a little bit. Where it's not practical, practical, we have to take lanes, and we'll be in the middle of the night, and there'll be CHP, Cozy, construction, uh, uh, law enforcement out there with the project as well. So we're hoping that's gonna be minimized. It, it's tra, it's road construction, it's, it's sidewalks, there's always gonna be our naysayers, unfortunately, but hopefully, they're gonna see the speed and what's being constructed out there, and hopefully tamp some of that down. To answer your question, uh, we have Gearability Construction Management, they will, they're gonna be the PM of that. We've got our engineering staff and myself and other city staff that will be paying very close attention to it, and working real closely with Caltrans as well. So there's a multiple layer of folks that are gonna be keeping their eyes on this.
I appreciate that, and, and that's kind of the coordination issue. Now, part of that, I guess, is that it came in the government, you know, right just before the pandemic, right? And then, so we've just seen a lot of balls drop when it comes to coordinating stuff and making sure projects run, you know, smoothly. So maybe my lens has been, you know, a bit obscured because of that, but, so I'm, I'm glad you're on it. You're the man, and we know who to call in the middle of the night.
Absolutely.
With that said, it will be disruptive.
Yeah.
And we have to be real there.
Yes.
It, it will be, um, but all the points that, that Fred mentioned, but we'll do a good job as we can to push information out, 'cause I got, they're gonna be doing it in phases, and this is gonna be the, the, the south side of one sixty-two, so the north side, I don't believe, is impacted during construction. So we wanna get the word out to the people, if they want to avoid or try to avoid the area, they can, but it, it's, it's gonna be disruptive, there's, there's no question.
Right.
Yes, Tracy?
You have a time question?
So, if everything works out perfectly, like I said, a lot of it's dependent on weather, that's why I mean by perfectly. Um, there's a hundred and fifty days, construction days, built into this contract, um, so it's roughly around six months, um, so we're hoping it's, that'll be staying on that schedule. We'll be pretty close on that, yes. Um, I had another point I wanted to mention, and then just poof, I'm sure it'll come back in a second, so.
Councilman Riggs?
Is there any communication to the businesses along that corridor on when to expect the highest level of disruption? I know that in the downtown, that's been something that's been talked about a lot, of like, just giving that advance notice that this period's gonna be your heaviest experience of.
And that was the bubble that just went poof, right before you said that. Uh, yeah, I think we need to probably engage and, and have some uh community outreach. The bar's been raised with public safety, having a fantastic uh media presence during uh social media pre- uh, presence during the storm, so Public Works is gonna have to double down on those efforts, too. And, you know, um, I don't have a problem personally knocking on doors and talking to businesses, you know, door to door. I, I've done it before, and uh, it's actually, I enjoy that part of the job, so, yes, we'll engage.
Thank you.
And we had a, we had a good call this afternoon on this, on the project, and, and I think more dialogue is happening, and we will definitely, once, once things are dialed in, we'll, we'll have a good idea about what blocks or what zones are being done so people can plan accordingly.
Exactly, and we're, I, I'd like to think we'll be dovetailing off of Caltrans, too, with their communication efforts, too, because their, their name's on this, and this is part of their project as well, so I think there'll be a good campaign on their side as well.
Anyone else? I'll make a short comment here. In the seventies, the city limits of Oroville did not go south of Oro Dam Boulevard. So that's why there's no curb gutter and sidewalk. It was in the county, and this is where we're finally at, that we've gotta get, you know, curb gutter sidewalk on our main entrance of community, so uh compliments to staff to get this grant in place, and the coordination with BKAG has been a huge help. And I know that many of the property owners along the south side have been contacted for right-of-way acquisition, and, and there's been a long uh administrative time spent on staff that's present with us and staff previous to this, time to get this project going, so it's a big deal. It really is, and um I don't think there's any property owner that isn't aware this is gonna happen, because they all were contacted for, you know, either acquisition of property or change to their, you know, parking situation or the curb gutter sidewalk, so for most of us here, this is the first time we're gonna see curb gutter sidewalk on the south side of Oro Dam Boulevard. That's, that's a big deal. It hasn't happened in a long time, so. Um, and I just wanna, like I said, compliment staff to get this to where we're at, 'cause it took a long time to get her going, and Vice Mayor Smith is correct, um, you think government takes a while, this started in twenty fifteen, and we're finally getting there. Um, and thank goodness that the community has uh supported this city enough to be able to have the funds to put this together, so um without any other further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay. So we were all just-
A motion that we direct the administrator to award the construction contract to Lehman Construction for construction of the straight route 162.
Second.
Motion seconded. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Johnstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pittman?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Boy, your nights are going to be heavy now, dude. All right. Item number six, the CAL FIRE contract amendment to include the fire equipment service and repairs. Who has this?
I'll be taking this one on, too. So I guess it's Fred's night. So just traditionally, the, the city mechanic shop has had three mechanics, one senior, two mechanics. Over since my tenure, since I've been here, it's, there's complexities of staffing taking place there and workload management. And with the restrictions of the CAL FIRE or the, our fire equipment and the necessity of timely diagnosing, repairs, and servicing of the equipment has been falling back farther and farther. With other recent events in the mechanic shop, we are down to one mechanic at this point. And we're on the, the crest of relocating our corporation yard, too. So there's, there's a lot of things at play. We're asking for the amendment to be expanded for CAL FIRE to take over all fire equipment repairs and maintenance to, to make sure that our one-off custom-built, purpose-built fire equipment is being maintained at its highest standards. There's many things that come with this CAL FIRE amendment that's beneficial to the city. First of all, we all have a 24-hour road mechanic that's designated to our equipment, for example. They have a modern mechanic facility and that's what they do. They work on fire equipment 24/7. Their shop is open 365 days out of the year and 24 hours a day. These are some of the pieces that are very important for us to have and maintain. Our scheduling has been falling back on just even A, B, and C services on the truck and that becomes critical. With CAL FIRE taking over these services, it'll reduce time in the shop, reduce time going to a third-party vendor to have repairs and diagnose. There's that piece as well. No time loss on diagnosing the equipment. If I have one mechanic, I have a fire truck, I have a VACON and a police car, it becomes very difficult very quickly for, to get diagnosing done. The other piece is that we feel that there's a potential savings with the economy of scale with CAL FIRE. They have such a much broader buying power than Oroville does and their sourcing of parts and equipment for our fire apparatuses. We're hoping that we can realize some type of a cost saving there. Now, the fiscal impact for this fiscal year is $94,000. With wages saving by the vacancies that we have, it's approximately $59,000, reducing the cost to this fiscal year to about $34,000. Going for the full contract price of, for one year, it's $225,000. That covers approximately 18 months. There is at some point potentially a cost-sharing opportunity with some other cities or agencies in the area, but that's very preliminary. So just that there's an opportunity there, I just wanted to share that with you. Any questions for me?
When you mentioned the mechanic, how many vehicles in the city do we have in terms of units?
Okay, so right now, we have approximately 145, 147 pieces of equipment. That's Public Works, that's Fire, that's Police, pool cars for City Hall. It's, it's, that's the total number. That's security trailers and equipment.
But in my experience, you try to get one mechanic per 20 vehicles, so we're way behind that ratio. If that's.
That is correct. I have one mechanic who's, incidentally, he was injured on the job, so he's actually working at half-capacity as well. So there, there's a lot going on there. There's a lot of complexity. And I think we're doing our due diligence to have CAL FIRE take over the, the human resource component of it, the, the liability of it, and the expertise of working on our very complex fire equipment. The Fire Department's got over 13 pieces. Is that correct? Yes, ma'am.
I just had a, are you done? Sorry.
Yes.
I just had a request that if this passes, and this is more for Ruth, if I need to send an email, I'm happy to do that. But if this passes, that the expenses for this amendment to the contract be delineated in future financial reports regarding the CAL FIRE contract. I know many individuals are following that closely. And so I just want to make sure that that added expense that we're adding in is a direct line, is represented as a line item.
And it is. And the contract amendment, it absolutely is. Adding, it's, in the contract, it outlines all the staff.
I want it in the, any reporting outs, any report outs that we talk about for CAL FIRE, I want it directly indicated. And this part is for this maintenance agreement that we've added on.
Got it.
Thank you.
Any questions, council? Do we have any cards on this?
We do have one speaker card on this item from Mike Brown.
Good evening, Mayor Pittman, members of the council. I have some experience. Though retired now 10 years, I have experience in Biggs and Gridley managing a small, small fleet of fire equipment that used to be maintained by local agricultural mechanics. By the mid-'90s, they couldn't keep up with the complexity. A cornerstone of fleet management in the fire service is the need to adopt new technology. You have to do it, even though your fire engine's worthless in about seven years economically, you can't sell them. So you have to maintain them. My mother and I had an agreement that fire engines were a little like church pews. The ones that got wore out were the most useful, but you got to maintain them. Because you can't have them falling apart when you need them. Or, as in the case of the city of Gridley, when you want to rent them back to the state. The city of Gridley bought a new fire engine when I was new to managing that fleet in 1995. It went out of service last year with 179,555 miles on it. That's a lot for a fire engine. I think Mayor Pittman would contend with that.
It is.
That and a wildland engine that I think came in service in 2007, still in service. In the last 10 years, which would be 19 engine years, earned 1.65 million dollars, which, when I was still working, was completely set aside, like Councilmember Riggs intimates, could be tracked in a part of fleet management. You should see what you're spending and what you might be recovering. Gridley had another strategy. It wasn't follow-through in Biggs. But money that wasn't expended on personnel in the cooperative agreement was diverted to equipment replacement. That's how the city of Gridley got in the ladder truck business. I don't know what they're doing now. But there was no ladder truck between Yuba City and Chico. And if you wait for one from Yuba City, you might as well ask for one from Oroville because they're both, when they finally both arrive, you'll need both of them.
Which we did.
Yeah, many times. And vice versa. So we've learned, we, we share equipment, whether it's mutual aid too late or through cooperative agreements more timely. But as a cornerstone of fleet management, you need a way to recover your costs and pay for equipment. So I'd encourage you to follow through on that, Councilmember Riggs. But most importantly, the maintenance of the equipment that CAL FIRE does, it's not just maintenance, it's an inspection program. And it keeps operators safe and it keeps the public safe because these things are driven up and down, even out at the edge of town where I live, pretty regularly. I hear them, I see them. And it's only going to be more and more so over time. And I believe you'll be satisfied like Biggs and Gridley have been if you do ask CAL FIRE to do the maintenance. They've got a good shop, they do good jobs, and they're trained fire mechanics, part of the Fire Chiefs Association, the mechanic section, as you recall. So thank you and I encourage you to do that.
Thank you, sir. Any other card?
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Questions from council or I'd entertain a motion?
I move that we approve the contract amendment with CAL FIRE to include the fire equipment services and repairs.
A second.
Call roll.
Councilmember Johnstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pittman?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Number seven, purchase of 655 Cal Oak and associated budget adjustments.
Okay, I guess this is the Fred show tonight. Much like it was Pat's show last time.
Folks, get ready for some pictures. This is going to be good.
So this is on the recently purchased property at 655 Cal Oak for $2,754,000. Part of this is we just want to be very transparent on how the funds were set up and what was spent on how we purchased the property. And then the additional ask for potential improvements and the needed improvements at the, at the facility. So the way the funds are broken down for the actual purchase, $1,066,000 from the RDA funds, redevelopment agency express bond proceeds. We brought in $688,000 from the Sewer Enterprise Fund. We're basing that on a percentage of staff and equipment that will be using the footprint out there at the courtyard at $688,000. And then the, the balance of $999,000 is from local fiscal recovery funds for a total of $2.7 million. Additionally, we're asking for $2 million for improvements. And I believe some of these, or a lot of these, will potentially be worst-case scenario. And the way this is breaking down is $250,000 for improvements on our mechanic shop, $200,000 for administrative building for offices, office space, and to make it more functional for us. We have $500,000 down for perimeter fencing. I believe that's potentially high, but I think some of the cost-saving there, we could actually roll it into security cameras and other security pieces. Part of this number was based off of what we paid for Sank Park. So apples and oranges, but without actually having an RFP before we could go out and buy the property, it was difficult. So these are real base numbers. The perimeter fencing, again, we can use, roll part of that funds into security enhancements like cameras, for example. $400,000 for emergency generator. And I think this weekend's storm underscores the importance of us having redundant backup generation. I believe once this RFP goes out, that that cost actually might shrink down. It'll be a better right-sized generator for us. So I'm hoping there's a cost savings there as well. $250,000 for the demolition of the existing courtyard buildings. That would be the sewer building, all the lean tubes on the south side, the, the Kwanzaa hut in the back and doing grading to make it a parking lot. The mechanic shop, the wash rack and the three-pole barn, which is to the south of the gas pumps, those are also part of the bid of.
Demolishing.
No, actually unbolted in them and breaking them down and potentially taking them over to the new Cal Oak facility because there's a couple of those buildings I would like to take over there. We could repurpose the three-pole barn and the wash rack. I think that could be a pretty good savings for the city. The mechanic shop is going to be a little trickier. It's going to be most likely the last piece to move for multiple reasons. The shop that's out of Cal Oak will need some upgrades and improvements for it to be functional for us. But also the switchgear and the main electrical panel is tied into the mechanic shop and including the solar array. So there's going to take some work. And I'm starting to dive that into that piece now, what that actual work is going to look like. How can we remove that building and have the main breaker out there and the, the switchgear or the equipment? It's not a switchgear, it's the.
Solar.
It's a solar piece, yeah, that's feeding back into the, into the grid. So there's some components there. And the radio antenna. And also the additional cost of the $400,000 for additional, a new fuel island. There's some pluses and minuses with moving the current tank. The current tank has a few years left on a warranty, but if we touch it, manufacturer touches it and physically moves it, we'll void the warranty. That becomes worthless as far as warranty. So I'm looking at potentially card lock. I just got some numbers from Dawson within the last day or two to see how well in line they are with using the card lock facility, which could be our best use of time and money for fueling, at least in the short term, and maybe stage some of these projects out over time. And for, instead of trying to get everything done in six months, we'll phase these in. What's the highest priority of six months, 12 months, 24, 36 months and those type of things? So I'm starting to really figure those out right now. And we also asked for an additional $16,000 because there was some pallet shelving and lumber racks, which will be very useful for us in the, in the warehouse where we can stack piping, telephone poles, streetlights, and just all kinds of different things versus what we have. And maybe get rid of some of our C containers because it's just not a practical way of warehousing material that we currently do in our existing yard. I'll return back in several weeks with some actual RFPs. We'll see who bids for tenant improvements for the mechanical, mechanic shop and the improvements in the administration building. RFP should be going out soon for a backup generator and some other enhancements. I'd like to break down the fiscal impact on this for us again. The funds for these improvements, we've identified a couple of sources for, for the $2 million. Again, on a percentage, we'll be using the Sewer Enterprise Fund for about $500,000 for their portion of the improvements to the mechanical shop and the offices and the warehouse area. And then we have identified local fiscal recovery fund for about $1.5 million for, a total of $2 million for improvements.
Again, I want to stress, I think Fred mentioned, but these, these are estimates. And some of these won't likely, some of them might not come to fruition. Again, the fuel, the fuel center is a perfect example. If we go to a card lock system, we're not asking the ability to spend this, but we're saying, here's some ideas that we have right now and here's the resources that we have available to fund that. And again, not one penny from reserves. These are all one-time dollars that we have available to do these, these improvements.
Any questions? I think the audience didn't really see, they saw those pictures flashing by. That's our new Public Works facility. It's already built, it's existing, it's a matter of move in. I want to thank, we have a subcommittee of Councilman Goodson and Councilman Weber that we looked at this issue and then we brought it to the full council. It became an opportunity for the city to expand its corporation yard, which was deathly needed. It was impacted by size, dimensions, and then there's an idea, win-win down the road that when he gets done demolishing the courtyard that is there, it may have a new purpose as a, an idea as a parking lot for the nearby stadium. So there's a kind of a win-win going on here in that. And I want to thank Councilman Goodson and Councilman Weber, who's not here tonight, for going through that process. It'll be the, plus, if you saw, there's administrative offices. So we'll actually be releasing or relieving some of the city hall demands for office space down there. Vice Mayor Smith?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is a great project, obviously, you know, just providing a lot of opportunities, I think, for us as a city to move forward right into the future. That being said, this is a pretty significant project, you know, a lot of cost here, multimillion-dollar project. Along with this approval tonight, assuming that we approve it, I would like to have brief updates, just like, you know, when a contractor is doing their draws as they're moving along with the, because there's a lot of moving components here. And it'd be nice for us to be kept apprised of the, the project and how it's going and, you know, so just giving us like regular updates. So I'd like to submit that, too, along with, you know, assuming, again, we're going to pass this, make an emotion that we would include that requirement. Because sometimes it's just easy to start, you know, get you just fall into the project and you're just doing your thing. So it'd be good.
Yeah, I would be more than happy to provide those than actually some of the contractors that would be selected for this. I'd love for them to have the opportunity to come up in front of council and do some updates as well. Absolutely. We just got the keys, literally, I believe, last Friday afternoon is when I actually got the first master key for the property. So this is all very fresh and new and very exciting. And just as a side note, I, I met all the Public Works staff and engineering and Kayla was out there in Cecilia. They all got the opportunity to walk through the empty space and see what's actually there. And I would love to bring the rest of the council out there at your convenience. I would love to walk through the space and kind of help you imagine how the space is going to be used. Some of the key pieces, too, that I'd like to reiterate, too, with this, with the Cal Oak and with these improvements are our camera truck for the sewer. It's a very expensive piece of equipment and it's, it's, it's a van, right? It's, 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 it needs to be inside. Now, we're going to have the ability to have our two camera trucks actually inside in a dedicated area to their data ports, secure out of the sun and hooked into the mainframe. Currently, our, our one sewer van takes up the space in our sewer garage where it doesn't leave room for too much. You got to pull the van out, you got to unplug it and do whatever you're going to do. So we're going to have dedicated space. All of our VACONS, our aerial truck, all of our mowers, all of all this very expensive equipment, our paving machine that we just got, our roller, all of our trailers will have a roof over them now. And, and that's really significant as well. And I, I think the team was pretty impressed with it. You know, it's, it's a lot to take in for the first time going out there and try to imagine everything. I think too, it's rare that a city actually has the opportunity to get a new corporation yard for all its facilities. There is also an additional office space there, and I want to give staff the, I know they're going to be cooking a lot of ideas, because I'm sure your list here is going to change as time comes along, and maybe there's somebody's got a better idea on something, which I certainly would encourage, because it's going to be their facility, and look forward to those discussions. But the actual office building down there, I'd kind of like to consider that the city hall annex as a thought pattern for staff to come back with a suggestion, because then you could put anybody there, wherever, you know, because that office building is considerable. It's three or four thousand square feet, if I recall. Right around four thousand square feet. If you just look at the rough numbers, there's about twenty thousand square feet of building space down there, plus seven acres of ground. You know, if we were trying to build that tomorrow, it'd be closer to sixteen to eighteen million dollars. And we don't have to spend it, it's already there, folks. We're just moving in. So that's a really unique time and opportunity. And as city government goes, this is a really big deal. It's huge. And I thank this council for supporting this idea. I think the public will be impressed by it in the future. Do we need to entertain a motion to...
I move that we purchased the building, the facility, at six-five-five Cal Oak with the funding that was planned, and including the milestones reached, continuous updates. And that's my motion. I also want to thank Mayor Pittman. What a find. And so thank you for your innovation, and this is a legacy point for you.
Legacy? Whoa, that's a big word. All right, entertain a second.
I'll second.
All right. Call or roll, please.
Councilmember John Stone? Yes. Councilmember Riggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pittman?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all. Now we get to a good item.
Ah, yes.
Well, let's see. I've got my thing here also to choose.
Item eight?
Eight. Eight.
Mission Esperanza.
Mission Esperanza established the Mission Esperanza project as a project with great community benefit, and consider development impact and art in public space fees. Who has this?
I do.
Oh, go, Amy.
Okay. Tonight, staff is requesting that the city council consider deferring development impact fees and art and public spaces fees associated with new development projects, and also to defer the frontage improvements until change in use or change in ownership of the Orville Rescue Mission for the Mission Esperanza pallet shelter project. These actions will reduce the overall upfront project costs from exceeding our available budget, but will also expedite the timeline for getting the project open and operating while preserving the economic viability of our project. The City of Orville has been awarded two rounds of encampment resolutions funding in support of the development of emergency shelter beds and services to chronically homeless and at-risk persons in the City of Orville. This project also has had support from the Butte County and also from our city council for the city ARPA funds. Mission Esperanza project will help city meet its emergency housing shelter needs, which will provide a safe space for unsheltered persons to go to get their basic needs met. There is prevailing public interest and support for the project and benefits that it will bring to the community. This project has substantial support from the community and will bring charitable, civic, educational, and other similar benefits. Keep in mind that many of the fees are based off the valuations of the project, and we are currently still in plan check, and these costs are rising. So the fees that I'm going to tell you right now are estimates. Impact fees for building for thirty pallet shelters, five ADA pallet shelters, two shower trailers, the hospitality room, for a total of four thousand two hundred and fifty square feet, is about twenty-two thousand dollars. The commercial office space, which is also the congregate shelter, is about twenty-three thousand, so that's just under forty-five thousand in impact fees for the city. Also, the city typically collects art in public places, which is one percent of the total project cost. The preliminary estimate of that was just under eighteen thousand, but as costs have arrived, we're thinking it's going to be twenty, twenty to forty thousand dollars. Other fees that we typically have are school district fees and low-PUD fees, and those are also going to be determined once the plan has been completed. Score fees, we've done an estimate, but we're not really sure exactly if this is true, but it's over two hundred thousand dollars. So what we're asking tonight, if the city council would consider deferring the impact fees, art and public spaces fees, and the frontage until unless there's change of use or Orville Rescue Mission is no longer owner. We have Suzy Cockums here also, who's the consultant for the city, and Alan Dykes, if you have any specific questions for them.
Suzy, could you come up and just give us an update? Just, not really a general question, but just how it's going.
Thank you. Yeah, quick update. Right now, I think, as Amy mentioned, we are in plan check stage. We submitted the first round of plans the first week of December. Here we are two months later, and we're still ironing out a whole bunch of details. Those details are things that have come up during plan check that could not have been foreseen when we applied for the funding. Many little different issues we've already ironed out, but there's some larger issues that are more substantial in cost and detail that are still being worked out. So at this stage of the game, we'll hopefully submit before the end of the month the initial plan check comments and remedies. We'll have another round of plan check to go through. The project team has a hundred and thirty days from the time they get that permit and can start the project. They have a hundred and thirty days to complete that project. Right now, we're pushing towards the end of September before we can even open doors and get that certificate of completion. Each one of those details that haven't been ironed out yet are costing additional funding in design time and civil engineering time, and just costs for the materials and supplies to remedy those issues. We are exceeding our budget that we initially planned for. We've got it covered right now, but we really need to hone in some of those additional costs, and I think the city team and I are going to meet later this week to iron out some of those details. But we really, really need to narrow down that timeframe. We want to open before the weather changes significantly. That teetering month is October, so hopefully we'll be open before the end of, say, Halloween.
Questions? I have a question, Beans How. This is a partnership project with, from the City of Orville to the Esperanza and the Rescue Mission. The score fee of the two hundred and thirty-five thousand, was this planned in the budget at all?
Nope. And it cannot be waived or deferred. There's no, I already checked. There's no mechanism in place in regulations or ordinances or anything for it to be waived or deferred or anything. So it's kind of one of those sunk costs.
Yeah.
Unsure if, I mean, it probably is not even a possibility, but if we requested the board to scored to consider, I'm not sure. I mean, it doesn't sound like it's a situation that will happen, but...
No, no. Because if you do it for one, you do it for all.
Yeah, I don't want to set a precedent.
That's right.
True. Go ahead, Mr. Ring.
Yeah, I was going to say, with that said, this is a very unique project, and certainly we're trying to do everything we can to keep the cost down for it, because it is, I mean, obviously it's such a benefit to the community, so...
Yeah, and there are a lot of things that we've come across that we, there was no way we could have forecasted or seen it ahead of time. So it is what it is, and we're making concessions elsewhere, so we've got it covered. We're just excited for it to move, you know, start shoveling some dirt.
Yeah. Vice Mayor Smith?
How many EDUs are you required for the project?
Any more than twenty is when the score fee kicks in, and we're going to have thirty-five.
I don't know, that's, again, there's some of you that are on score. I don't know if there's any way to...
Well, it's...
With that, I don't know. That's another, that gets in another arena, but just a thought.
Tracy?
I fully support whatever we can do to help get things going. I mean, this, there's nothing bad that I can see in not helping them get to a point where they can break ground. So whatever, I'm fully support whatever we can do to minimize their costs.
Anyone else?
Same.
Same? Same?
You looking for a motion? There's this...
Go ahead.
Thank you for a motion. I move that we waive the development impact in art fees and defer the frontage improvements until change of ownership.
I'll second.
Excuse me, my apologies. It looks like we had a couple of issues with some of the actions getting transferred. According to staff report, actually, it's deferring, it's a deferral. If you refer to page ninety-four, those are the actions that are requested on this.
Yeah.
I apologize. I want to make sure you catch these, because they are different.
So is your motion that you're taking the recommendation of all three?
Absolutely. So moved.
And so seconded. Is that clear? Call or roll?
Councilmember John Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pittman?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right.
So much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to add too, is just to look at is if the city can help with that score fee. If we did, it's not really an impact fee deferral, it would just be, where do we stand legally on that issue?
So city can defer or waive any of its fees, as you've done. SCORE is a different entity, and they would have to independently make a determination that the project is presenting an exceptional community benefit, and that its uniqueness might justify some action on their part, but that is an issue for SCORE, unfortunately.
We'll bring it up.
We happen to know people.
We'll bring it up. Thank you, Suzy.
I will also add that Suzy has reached out to the school district and is asking if there is such a way to defer fees for that, considering we won't have any students living at the shelter. The, they do not have a current process for that, but they did say that if we paid the fees upfront, we could request a refund, and then they would take it to the board and consider it. So we will be pursuing that as well.
Great, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Item number ten, opportunity to compete?
Nine.
Oh, excuse me, nine. Man, I'm just...
That's all right.
Amendment to the lease agreement between the City of Orville and YMCA of the Superior California for operations of the convention center.
That's me. So in the original agreement with the YMCA to operate out of the convention center, there was, there were some payments that were required from the YMCA. One of them, they were to pay rent, and another one, they were to pay, sorry, one was to pay utilities, another was to pay rent, based on the income that was received through their activities. In reality, and we had a presentation to council a little while back, and council learned that there really is no revenue that's coming in from the YMCA. Their programs are largely, they largely defer the costs or write off the cost to families that can't afford to participate in those programs. So what we're doing tonight with this, what we brought to council tonight, is we're basically memorializing the contract as the arrangement exists currently. So there would be no requirement for rent, and there would be no requirement for utilities to be paid. However, we will look at, we'll work with the YMCA over time. We'll meet with them quarterly, and we'll determine if at some point their income changes and starts to increase, where we maybe could start to charge rent, or if it'd be appropriate to charge rent or to have them pay utilities. So this is just basically cleaning up the original contract to exist the realities of the YMCA operating at the convention center.
Any questions from staff?
I just have one quick question.
Sure.
As far as with utilities, that cost can be quite significant, especially in extreme weather. Do we have a way to control the stats, or are they on some sort of management system? Do you know?
They are not. They are, they're somewhat subsidized by the solar panels. I'm still trying to figure out exactly what we're getting at, but the cost is roughly about forty-five hundred dollars a month.
Yeah, I just think that would probably be a good thing to look into, because, you know, when you're not paying the utilities, not saying that anyone's being negligent, but you have less motive to pay attention.
Yeah.
I think it would be a good idea.
Councilman Riggs brought up a good question in this discussion some past. Is the city paying the insurance, or are they paying the insurance on the building?
We both have insurance. So we pay the insurance for the building, we pay for our general liability for the building, they pay for their workers' comp and the liability for their programs.
Yeah, I have no problem with what she suggested. It's our building, we should have the insurance covered, so...
And I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that in my preamble, but that is actually in the agreement as we...
Good idea. Any other questions? If not, I'll, do we have any cards on this?
We have none.
All right, folks. Go ahead, Councilman Riggs.
Forgive me, I should have looked more closely, but it just came to my mind. Does this sunset in any period of time? How long is this agreement set in place for until we decide to change it? That seems...
We're annually.
Okay.
Where I, the way that I wrote the agreement was that it would be an annual review to see if we keep moving forward. And then, as I mentioned, there's a sixty, or there's a quarterly review of the project. So we'll be working, we have, Mr. Ring and I have been working pretty closely with the YMCA over the past several months, and we'll continue to do so. We recognize that the meeting, the presentations before, that the YMCA is an important entity in this community, so we'll work with them to, for their success here.
And we'll make sure we bring the council updates on that, because again, we are, again, continuing to partner with Feather River and look at options. And just so you know, Vice Mayor Smith, they have reduced their programs a little bit right now, the Y has, to morning programs only. So if they're not renting or leasing out the facility, I imagine the utility costs should likely go down too with, at least right now, if they're not occupying it the entire time. But we're looking for a solution that's a win-win, hopefully.
Sure. All right. Any other comments?
Just real quick. This solar panels, do, just panels, so...
That's okay.
My voice is loud. Sorry about that. So the city owns the solar panels?
These are the solar panels that are at the courtyard currently. So the agreement that we have is that those solar panels are used to offset our energy use sort of as an aggregation.
Okay.
So there's, there are several sites that this is, the solar panel, energy creation has been assigned percentages to different sites throughout the city, and the convention center is one of those.
And is there a way for us to evaluate that?
I'm diving into that currently, right now. It's really complicated. I've been working with PG&E, and I've just received some information from them today that I need them to distill down for me, because even though I do have some knowledge about solar panels, I don't speak PG&E, so they're helping me with this.
Well, because I know, like, my personal solar panels at my house, I pay for what I produce, not for what I use. So I way overproduce compared to what I use, and, but I don't own mine, right? So I'm basically paying, yeah. So I was saying, if we, if it's a production thing, then they should have free.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't fully, definitely does not fully offset the cost of the utilities there. Like I said, we haven't spread around town, and I just received this list from PG&E today, so twenty percent goes to here, ten percent goes to there, and I have to, I have to crack into that to see what is assigned to what and what kind of value we're getting off the convention center. But if we assigned it all to the convention center, it'll be the same thing, basically, because we're using wattage or kilowatt hours based on, you know, if we assign it all there, if we spread it out, it's still going to be the same savings to the city.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quickly, on the lease with the quarterly review, is the language adequate where if another option came along, then we could break into that? Where, in other words, it's a one year with that quarterly review, but if something else came along, could we then make a change? Or no, is it just a review, and we're looking at where we are?
We did not, I didn't write that in to have a complete change. Really, this was more designed to, in an effort to keep the YMCA here and active.
came along, could, could we then make a change? Or no, is it just a review and we're looking at where we are?
We did not, I didn't write that in to have a complete change. Really, this was more designed to, in an effort to keep the YMCA here and active. So it's a quarterly review to see whether or not they should start paying, but there are still conversations ongoing with Feather River and with the YMCA about a potential partnership at the, at the convention center. So there could be some opportunities for coexistence with the YMCA and another agency, whether it's Feather River or something else.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm looking for is language so that, and if there's interest in that, that then there is an allowance, you know, for that opportunity to move forward or advance. But with a year, the YMCA would be less inclined, I would think, than to entertain that until the full year is up. So I'm a little concerned about that part. So if Feather River Parks District has a change in their situation where then they are, you know, seeking a relationship more forthright, right? Then, you know, what motive would YMCA have to entertain that?
Well, it's, I'm not really sure if that's up to the YMCA because they don't have exclusive rights to the convention center. So they have the right to use the convention center and, you know, they are providing an additional service to the city besides just operating their programs out of there because they're actually the event coordinator and the manager there. So if you, someone wants to use the YMCA, they go through the, or sorry, the convention center, they go through the YMCA to book those events and the YMCA sets up the tables and the chairs or whatever the people need for those, for those events. So there is this other component where, where the YMCA, it's a little bit out of their wheelhouse, I feel like, but they've been doing, they've been doing a good job so far. We've had no complaints whatsoever from anyone who's booked up. So we could add some language to say that, I don't think that the language that's in there precludes us from inviting another entity to come into the, rent the space while the YMCA is not using it. But if, I think if the suggestion is that we would potentially, if you have a great deal, to move the YMCA out and have another entity come in, that's something that we could look at. But it is maybe wise to note that the YMCA is looking to sell both of their properties that are in the city. So that would, could potentially leave us with no YMCA, no subsidies for our lower-income people.
Yeah, and that would not be good. So what I'm just looking for is that partnership opportunity in that I just wouldn't want to see anything to, you know.
Jeopardize.
Yeah, reduce the motivation to, you know, look at and being creative with options and that's all. That's not all I'm looking for, but, you know, I think I'm comfortable kind of moving forward with what you've, you know, presented here. But just the continued conversation, I think, is important to have because of the circumstances that we, we do see here.
Entertain a motion.
A question.
Yeah, oh, sorry.
Remind me, what's the, the normal monthly rental that is supposed to be paid that we're?
There was never an established amount. The normal, the amount was to be established at some point that the city and the YMCA together decided, determined that they had enough income coming in to then pay a percentage to the city for rent. So there, in the, in the agreement, there is no, there is no set amount that's, that is spelled out.
It was, it was to be negotiated, I think, after their first six months or year in the building.
So do we have any, any idea of potentially what rental that facility would look like?
Or what our average price per square foot for renting out our other facilities is?
Remind me, isn't, who's got any buck square foot?
I honestly do not know what we might charge for that. This is, to me, it's kind of a one-off because it's a gym, you know, it's, it's, it's the convention center, but the main part of it is a gym. It's a gym floor. There's a stage and they have plays that run there. So it really is, it really is sort of set up for exactly what it's being used for now.
I mean, I'm not, I love the Y. I'm just curious in regards to that.
Yep.
I think in one respect is we're not having to operate or run the building, so I look at it, that is a relief to us because when we had the building solely, it drew down all our resources, public works to take care of that versus taking care of our street, so.
Having them there also provides some protection for the Y. So at least having it occupied in some capacity, you know, it prevents people from wanting to go in. And I think that we, it might be tough to find another entity that would rent that place for similar services that would also be our event manager or our event, you know, coordinator.
Do I see Councilman Goodson?
So at some point, we, we would like to generate some revenue, right?
Yes, that would be nice.
And recoup some of, I mean, how much are we into that thing now? Four million?
Yeah.
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 No, I mean, believe me, that conversation comes up every time we meet. They're, they're very well aware that we're looking at at least covering our costs to start with. That's the goal initially, is to cover the costs. And, and we do hope that once the Feather River continues to be an escrow with that facility on Feather River Boulevard and when, if and when that, I mean, that's going to take some time, but if and when they exit that, they might have more of an appetite to partner over here, but certainly they've expressed a desire to at least partner partially over here and provide some programs which will provide some revenue or cost offsets or, yes.
Additional question. Cover our costs. What are our monthly costs roughly?
The utilities are about $45,000 a year and our insurance, I think, is $30,000 a year.
Thirty thousand a year.
Well, we would have had to insure it one way or another.
Yep.
Unless we sell it, so.
So add those two together and then divide it by 12.
Seventy-three thousand, but the utility should go down because their use is going to go down, but seventy-three thousand divided by 12?
It's about $6,000 a month. Yeah.
About $6,000 a month.
So there's a gold on the road. Okay, Vice Mayor Smith?
Yeah, so since we're discussing the building, what are we looking at in the way of completion on projects? You know, there's a lot of projects going on, on, over there and then additionally in the front. Kind of just since we're talking about that building and leasing and all of that, kind of maybe just a brief update where we are.
So the, the interior is going well. There have been some setbacks. You know, we've had some, we've had some things that we've found that were unexpected as you can always expect with construction. It's, we're, the bathrooms, the tile and the dividers between the stalls, there's a lead time on those that are, that are going to be delaying this project a little bit. So it looks like those are coming in in April. So I just learned that today. We have, we have engineers that are working on footings for the facade or for that, that front, the glazing in the front. And they're working on a fix for the, for the footings because the footings that were there with the old facade are now adequate for the new facade. So those are being worked on right now. And the stage is, the stage work is just about done. The curtains, we approved a change order just recently to have the curtains removed because after we cut into the stage and we added those steps on either side and we have the ADA lift, the curtains are too big. So, and then there's some walls that are bringing in to, on, on either side a little bit to just sort of narrow the stage. And so the curtains have to be amended or, you know, they have to be shortened. And then that's a whole thing. So the poles and the, you know, the pulls and the wheel, pulleys and the wheels and the bars that they ride on, all of that has to be changed. So that's all happening right now as well. But it's otherwise, it's, it's coming along well, but it's, there's delays that I think you always expect are going to happen, but we didn't expect them to happen.
Go ahead. So the bathrooms, are they nonusable right now? I mean, the side?
They're, they are not bathrooms right now. They're, they're.
They're roughed out.
And so we're not looking, I mean, that's funny. So, and not even till maybe May or something?
Oh, yeah.
Well, we're, they told us today that when the things, when the products come in, they're expected to come in and about the, later in the first week or sometime in the second week of April, and that it takes them about three days to knock it all out. So I'm not going to hold my breath on that, but that's what I was told today.
I'll tell you what, when I was remodeling restaurants, if I was doing this, I'd have been done a long time ago.
Yeah.
It's like, wow. Because I remember two years ago, the bathrooms are going to be done.
Yeah.
You know, it's like, holy smoke. What are we doing? But anyway, that's for another conversation. And hopefully we'll see that. I'd like, in fact, I asked, well, we have that done for the salmon festival? Twenty twenty, twenty twenty. Oh, yeah. So here we are.
There was, there were some other things in the bathrooms that had to be kind of mitigated. There's just little design things that had to be done. Electricals had to be moved and things about the, where the, where the drinking fountains are. And then on the one side, and I think I might have mentioned this before, but there was, when they opened up the wall on the women's bathroom side, they found that at some point in time, no records of it, but someone had built a stairway and then, and then they got rid of it, but they only got rid of half of it. So they, so the stairway started at about six feet high and then it extended up into the ceiling.
Nightmare.
And then the wall that was on the outside of that stairway had been sort of rebuilt and it's a, it's a bearing wall, but the, but the joists, the ceiling joists up above were only sitting on the, basically two-by-fours and they were spliced right on top of the two-by-fours. So now we had to do a whole engineering thing to figure out, how do we do that? So we extended the, that wall was coming out as part of the project and we had to extend the floor joists or the ceiling joists to go all the way across. So just little things.
Minor.
Yeah.
So, yes, we appreciate. Are you looking for a motion?
I'm looking for a motion.
I know, I was, I was hoping. And so I move that we amend the lease agreement with the YMCA for the operation of the convention.
Right here, second.
Second.
Call or roll?
Councilmember John Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pittman?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all. Appreciate that discussion. Number 10. Sorry, I asked. Is the opportunity to compete for funding of a microgrid design for, provide energy resiliency during disaster events.
Was there ever a more?
Good timing, Pat.
Good time, yeah, for an item to come up. I created the storm. I, I brought this up to you last, at the last meeting and we just talked about it and whether or not you wanted me to bring this back. So Our Energy, they, they reviewed cities all around the northern state to see, find a city that would maybe be a good, strong candidate for this program, and so they narrowed in on us. They called me and asked for an appointment and I'm interested in microgrids, so I entertained the idea. And then as it unfolded, it seemed more and more interesting. So what this is, is if we create, if, sorry, we have to work with PG&E. This is a grant that they're being mandated by the state of California to provide for some communities that are in high-risk areas for disaster to have some resiliency for, for power. So what this would do is if we're approved ultimately for this grant, we would be able to say island, Kayla, would you put that picture up? I'm getting ahead of myself, but I want it up there anyway. So we would be able to island areas where we have critical infrastructure. So working with the, working with the Our Energy team, I identified, well, we identified these, these locations here. So if you can see the yellow area, the yellow perimeter around this area, it encompasses the public safety building, the hospital, our new corp yard, the sewage treatment plant, city hall, tribal health. And so this area right here would be islanded in a disaster. So if, if PG&E is forced to shut the power down for some reason, this area would not go down. This area would remain active and powered throughout that disaster. In the, if, if we're accepted for the grant, in addition to this, the infrastructure that they would put in, which what we've been talking about so far is solar, but it, it could be something else. But this would be built and it would be another benefit for the city year-round. So year-round, we could use this as an aggregate benefit, just like we have with the solar panels that we have right now. And in the event of a disaster, if they have to shut the power down, it would island this out. So the rest of the town may be out, but our critical infrastructure could still operate. I've been asking them if we can include the airport because I know the airport has a critical function in disasters, but because of the location of the airport, it may or may not be possible. It's not included on this map, but it is something they're, they're going to try to have considered in the grant of this, if this comes through. So they, there are two sort of phases with this, and I do have Our Energy on the line, so I'm going to tee them up and you can ask them all the questions you want to get into the details. But there are two, there are two components to this. One is there's a grant for writing the grant. So, so PG&E would actually provide a grant for writing the grant. However, they won't give that money right up front. So the grant, if we're accepted into this and we, and Our Energy was to write this grant for us, and if we're accepted, then we could get reimbursed for the costs of the grant writing. Our Energy is, is not, they are willing to, they're willing to take the chance and write the grant for us and they won't ask for any money at the end of this. If we don't get the, if we don't get the big grant, they have asked for a $5,000 good take, good faith deposit upfront for, for going through the process. If the grant is successful, then we could be eligible for up to $18 million of, for the, towards this project. And I think what I'd like to do at this point right now is ask anyone from the Our Energy team if they need to correct anything that I just said. I think I've nailed it, but, and then, and then open it up if you have any questions for them.
So Dustin or Kurt? Peter, are you there?
Hi, Mayor, City Council, Patrick. This is Dustin Jolly, founder and CEO of Our Energy. Thanks for having us. I know I'm on by audio, I think, but just want, just a quick sound check to make sure you can hear me. I don't think the camera is on, though.
Loud and clear.
I can hear you, Dustin.
Great, great. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. Patrick, I think you nailed it. I don't think I have anything to correct necessarily. Maybe just a quick clarification that, you know, the, the grant to write the grant, if you will, which is a little bit confusing, this, this money can, you know, will come out in a few different stages from PG&E. PG&E is basically flowing this money through, this is from the state of California. As Patrick mentioned, the Public Utilities Commission is mandating them to roll out these programs. And the grant to write the grant is $25,000. So as Patrick mentioned, basically it's a competitive process just to fill out the application, which is a pretty extensive amount of work. They will reimburse up to $25,000. And so that's the portion that Patrick mentioned at the front end. That's the front door. And as, as he outlined, you know, we are requesting humbly that perhaps the city consider an in-kind contribution to our own efforts. At $5,000, we basically wouldn't charge the city anything else. And the whole intention of this program is that there's little to no out-of-pocket cost to the city to participate in this program, although, you know, while that's the blanket intention, I think that we're going to find that, you know, perhaps the cost to prepare even the application is significantly above and beyond $25,000. That's, that's still to be determined. But that's, that's the proposition in front of us at the moment. And then as Patrick outlined, from that point forward, when the application is submitted and accepted, which at this stage, we're quite confident will be the case based on the early consultations with PG&E and the, and the various criteria that we've been working through, then that opens up additional grant monies, as Patrick mentioned, up to $18 million in matching funds from the state through PG&E to implement this project. Now, it should be mentioned perhaps that a project of this magnitude will cost well above and beyond $18 million, but the $18 million grant, of course, would go against the, the capital cost of the project and help the city and ourselves in support of the city and securing other private financing, et cetera, and ultimately implementing the project. I'll pause there. Thank you.
Councilman Goodson has a question.
Good evening. Yes, that was my question. What would be the total cost of this project? So it sounds like we're looking at approximately 40 million or more?
Councilmember, I think that that's probably a reasonable estimate. You know, frankly, the, the size and scope of the project is still in the early and preliminary stages of being conceptualized. So the outline that Patrick drew is sort of our, our. of being conceptualized. So the outline that Patrick drew is sort of our our long our long list and wish list for a project that could encompass all these facilities. There are actually a few others that didn't make it on that map that we've identified since then, including the high school and a couple of others. But I, you know, this, I think, is most likely to be in, you know, at a minimum of tens of millions of dollars capital project. So, you know, that's that's why they set the grant amount at the at the magnitude that they do at eighteen up to $18 million per project, knowing that it's likely a multiple tens of millions of dollars project on average.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yeah. So, you know, obviously, immediately, wow, that sounds really cool, the microgrid. And, you know, in concept, completely for it. I mean, who wouldn't be in anything that hardens your city against disaster. But then I start thinking about government again. And like JPA is like the one we joined in with the county and kind of where that went when it comes to energy, energy management. And then the so you said solar, and then I'm right away thinking, well, you know, that's great during the daytime. And so, you know, 18 million seems to me like just get to get it started because you're going to have to have some sort of battery capacity, obviously, to provide energy or some other mechanism. And then so what does that look like? And then is the part of the design concept here? So you have solar, so that that system would be then obviously producing electricity? Would that then create some of the offsets? Is that part of the, I think, the bigger, higher level picture? And then when it comes, so that's a question. And then when it comes to the five, so it's kind of like pay to play. So to get in line, we put up $5,000. And then so how many of these grants are going to be awarded? So, you know, if you start looking at all the cities in the state, you know, what it kind of puts us in line, you know, get in line. And so the condition and the quality of our grant, you know, that'll get us, you know, into that process. But so how many of these grants are they going to award? You know, what are we looking at, big picture? And then, again, on the other side, actual production, the actual project itself, you know, kind of maybe a high level, what those components look like, and then some of the offsets that potentially might be there. A lot of questions.
Battery storage that would be that would be a part of this project, for sure. The and we would get to use the energy that is produced is when there's no disaster. So it's right. So if we if we have this in there, just like the solar array that we have down at the corp yard currently right now, we would get the benefit of the energy production year round or in blue skies, as it says in the staff report, blue sky days, where it's just a nice day and there and we have and we have sun coming down. And then in the event of a disaster, it all closes up and it just keeps that portion active and energized.
And just so to be clear, when I'm looking at that map, those are also residential. The whole that whole grid would be hot then, not just those particular facilities.
And this is not, these are not set in stone. We're trying to capture, we're trying to capture. So for me, you know, and I think I'd kind of told them when they asked for the priorities, I said, public safety and the sewage treatment plant and the hospital. So City Hall, we can, we can pivot, we can take our laptops down to the public safety center and we can operate out of there. We started to add in these other, well, the corp yard, so that, you know, there's obvious reasons why the corp yard might be, we want that up and running. The high school is included because that becomes a a place of refuge.
Right. I guess part of it is saying my contractor brain starts running. And so I'm starting to think how you integrate all of those with switches and, you know, how do you heat up just that area? And then with that, all the other businesses and residents within that within that grid that you've outlined there. So maybe not. You'd have to independently wire up each one of those components.
Once I'm, yeah, and I have Dustin, well, Dustin, I'm gonna have you weigh in on that.
Sure. I could speak to that briefly if you'd like. So that's you're asking some some great questions there. And frankly, we're finding that PG&E is is crafting some of these nuances as they go. The city has had the foresight to be in the first tranche of applicants under this program that will roll out over the next year and a half or so and a couple of more tranches after this. And so we're in the very first batch. The city of Orville is finding itself in the in the very first batch of prospective applicants to the program, which bodes well, I think, for the funding allocation. There's there were a few questions that came up here, so I want to try to tick those off for the council here. So to answer the first one about the the competitive grant and the funding that's available, the CPUC directed the three big investor owned utilities in California to roll out these programs. So that's PG&E, Southern California Edison, and SDG&E down in SoCal. And there's funding allocations for all three of them. PG&E's allocation is 72 79.2 million. So doing some quick back of the envelope math, if in the in the first, in the the first segment of this program, you know, that that provides enough space for about four or five projects if they're all funded at the full $18 million. So it's a relatively small number of projects. But there are all kinds of different projects being proposed under this program, some of which will be significantly smaller than that. So, you know, the time will tell in terms of how many projects will actually be funded. But that's a data point for you to just answer that question. Now, in terms of the micro, the potential microgrid area and how it would be powered up and and so forth to those latter questions, you know, we're actually working with PG&E through some of those nuances right now. For example, we, of course, immediately pointed out that, you know, in addition to these critical facilities that we identified, there's quite a number of kind of incidental customers, if you will, to this microgrid area just by virtue of being within that boundary. And PG&E has been back and forth on this issue. And so far, the guidance from them is that everyone within the in the boundary would be included and that they would not be excluded or have the ability to opt out necessarily by use of PG&E's smart meters. So everyone within the area would participate. Now, the, you know, by participate, PG&E, as a part of complying with this directive, has actually enacted a new tariff specific to these microgrid projects. There it's called the Community Microgrid Enablement Tariff. And so there is a specific tariff that energy customers would pay under when islanded from the rest of the grid and operating in islanded mode. So there's there's quite a bureaucracy and, you know, and set of programs that have been set up around this. But just wanted to take a stab at answering a couple of those questions. Thank you. I'll pause there.
How small is that tariff?
She asked a question. How small is that tariff?
The well, it's a tariff like like other typical PG&E rates. I don't have the tariff in front of me right now and to quote the the rates for you, but it would be basically like paying your electric rates under normal conditions, more or less. Right.
Thompson has a question.
Yeah. I got mixed feelings on, you know, obviously, I think what Councilman Smith said, I think, was very well put. It sounds great when you first hear about it. But as I'm looking at the map, like, I know the hospital has its own backup power.
Absolutely.
I know the sewage treatment has its own power options and backup power. I don't know about the tribal health, but I I'm assuming that they've got something in place. So, you know, to nothing's for free ever. So, I mean, even just that you're one of your last comments about those inside the microgrid would have to would be paying an extra tariff because of the, you know, the confidence that even if power goes out in other places, that they would be their power would not be turned off. Another concern I have is regarding the amount of solar and batteries, where all that would go, the man likes, I like solar. I have solar in my house, but those batteries do have a shelf life. They do are are expensive. So, yeah, I'm actually not quite sure what I think about this, to be honest. I think I'm not ready to move forward on it tonight. I think there's I have a lot more questions and just kind of thinking I gotta look at it. Sounds like there's some, especially since just kind of in a last statement, there a tariff, it just kind of seems like fine print that we're like, oh, wait, hold on here.
Well, if I could add something quickly on that, you know, I know tariff sounds like something of a four letter word. You know, all of our rates are under prescribed tariffs that we pay to PG&E, just as they are now on the books. This is just an additive tariff to their, you know, their their portfolio of tariffs, if you will, that apply to all different types of customers. And it wouldn't be an additive cost to customers on a day to day basis or on their month over month typical utility bills. This would just simply provide a tariff to be billed under when the microgrid is operating in islanded mode. So of course, when everyone else is in the dark outside the microgrid area, they would not be paying any electric electric costs. The folks that remain up within the microgrid area would pay the commensurate tariff for remaining up.
So their tariff would only, like you said, only paid during disasters?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? I have a kind of a white comment. One of them is the there, as Councilman Thompson recommended, there's a couple of facilities that do have their own backup power. But ones that don't is like, I'd like to see included if we move forward with this, the Southside Community Center, which is a potential refuge that I don't believe has backup power. Also, our Orville Convention Center is another refuge that I would like to include in the microgrid if we move forward with this. And I'm glad to see the high schools involved in that. But as you mentioned, SCORE does have its own backup power in place. As far as the application goes, I think we have a unique opportunity here in that Orville has considerable power generation. If you didn't know this, all the power that goes to Bucks Lake, to La Porte, comes from Orville. The substations at Orville feed all those communities in the eastern area. And I know that because of the line goes down, that's what goes down up in the hills, Lake Medron, Berry Creek, all the area. Orville is the substation to feed most of east the eastern foothills. And not many people know that. And part of the other reason that we do is all the power that comes out of the Feather River Canyon happens to trans right through the middle of town and those high tension power lines, you know, that come out of the canyon that go south. I noticed they're starting to tap those lines. So the power that comes out of the Feather River Canyon comes right through Orville. So I'm thinking that as a microgrid, we may be a good candidate for it because it's already kind of in place. And many of those towers, the wires have been here for over 100 years. So in fact, that's the one that caused the fire, the campfire goes right across to Orange Avenue. So it's just an opportunity. I see that we may have a little bit more than any other community that has major power lines going through the middle of our community. I mean, it goes right through our residential area. So I think the possibility of our grant application having success, to me, from my knowledge of the power here, it's got some high possibilities, high percentages. Plus, our entire system is obviously in different grids. As you see today, not everybody in town got power at the same time. Each grid got it at a different time. So it might be an advantage to have this grid that is exclusive to disaster operations in plain. And then when, if they want to see a community that's had examples of disasters, I think we can go high on that inventory list in terms of evacuating people and needing the power used. So I kind of like the idea. If some council want to get more information, that's fine. But I really see it as a positive and just making some adjustments to what we have and highlighting the fact that our refugee areas, we need, I know the last Sunday night, that's all I was conversing with our city administrator about, you know, how many days the power's going to be out and where we're going to put people in the meantime. And the list was short, so it'd be nice to make that list a little bigger. And like I said, the Southside Community Center is a great one, the Orville Convention Center.
Orville Rescue Mission.
Orville Rescue Mission, yes, thank you. It's another good one that needs to have power. So.
So the the map that we created is not, it's right, we haven't fully defined it yet. And actually, we did, I drew the map.
Yeah.
I'm not a map guy.
Okay.
But the 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 convention center and the high school are ones that we just talked about recently about adding in because they are refuge centers.
Right.
Right.
And then hadn't thought about Southside. I didn't realize that that was also a refuge center. So that would make sense for that to be in there as well. But it does then, it it widens the it widens the the map. So the bigger this area is, and this is part of what they were trying to do, is keep it toned down. That's why it looks skinny and parts. And it's because the the larger you make it, the bigger the system you have to provide. And then the bigger the system, the more the money that costs.
Right. Well, I could tell you along Olive Highway, if those lines go down almost all of Kelly Ridge, Berry Creek, Feather Falls, Bucks Lake lose power. That's how critical those lines are on Long Olive Highway. So we have the major connectors going through our community. I I might be wrong. Maybe Dustin, you could tell me if that's that's a possibility or just an observation that may have some merit.
It's an interesting possibility. And I think there are several different pathways that the city could take in pursuing its energy and resilience goals. This simply represents one of these new programs that's been instigated and partially funded by the state. It's it's our opinion that, you know, this is a pathway that the city can explore, perhaps in parallel with looking at some other community energy and resilience initiatives and ultimately take stock of those things, you know, in an informed way down the road before making any hard decisions or commitments to participate in one program or another. You know, I think the city putting its hat in the ring to secure some of this funding is something that just just leaves some of that optionality on the table. So, no, please, go ahead.
I appreciate that. In fact, it wasn't too long ago, the PG&E had rented space from our corporation yard for about 20 of their shipping container sized generators. And I was wondering why they kept them here in Orville. Well, that's because that substation's super critical to the east foothills. And that's why they had those generators sitting there. And I don't know if they were actually operated, but they leased property from the city as which is right next to the corporation yard. Vice Mayor Smith?
Yeah, appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. We had a microgrid during the big storm. I looked out over the Oro View from where I live, and the only place that was lit up was downtown.
That's true.
But and then hence the microgrid. It's just that. It's a very small area because I start thinking about trying to maintain the grid with batteries and that type of thing. The technology is just, the last I've read, just really isn't totally there on a large scale. So you start spreading this thing out and you need, you know, you're back to really becoming a utility company. You're losing the entire concept of a microgrid. And I'm thinking 18 million, if we're identifying, you know, safety center and a few areas, one off areas that really need to maintain power during significant disasters, it would make more sense just to each one of those facilities than have their own generation capacity rather than trying to, you know, set up a very complex microgrid with tariff systems. And, you know, it just gets, it sounds really complicated. And at the end of the day, probably, technology is an issue. There's a lot of issues here. And then again, like I said, I'm starting to putting in my non-engineering brain. I'm not an engineer, but I was a contractor. And I'm just thinking, man, this is a monstrosity. And I just need to have more information on this because just like with other things that I've seen, you know, great ideas, grand plans come and go. It sounds good. But the practicality, you know, and there's that part of me that says, I don't want to miss out on an $18 million. But when you roll the dice, look at how many cities in Orville, you're talking about five communities, six communities that are going to win at the end of the day. The practical reality of this is that, you know, it's a good way for funding for those that are writing the grants. And it's a lot of fun. But the practicality of this really working its way out into our community, I just, I have a big question mark on it. But, you know, and again, it's just, it's, I need more time. I'm not ready to personally give my thumbs up on this tonight. I mean, you know, it's, well, it's just 5,000 bucks to get, you know, in in, you know, to pay to play, so to speak. But, you know, at this point, I think we need to start really watching every penny we're spending here. And just like the, you know, not to pick on that JP, the energy JPA with the county in Chico, but I haven't seen any fruit from that. And I predicted that, actually, because I did a lot of homework on it back when that was being evaluated. And I just thought, you know, it sounds great on paper. It's very convincing. But the practicality of trying to beat, in this case, it was PG&E at their own game, which is energy purchasing, and that to think that we're going to outplay them, you know, good luck with that. Again, but that's kind of a different issue. But I see this, I see some parallels with that and this as well. So that's just where I'm at. I need more opportunity. I need more information to make a super informed decision. I'm just, I'm just seeing a lot of complexity here and at the end of the day, not really, you know, getting the award. And or if we do get the award of 18 million bucks. And/or if we do get the award of 18 million bucks, and you have this great big huge footprint, it's going to take many, many more millions of dollars to make it a reality. And then you're talking, now we're going to have to get bonds, and, you know, how do we finance that and get it across? And then there's always the, oh, we didn't see that, you know, connection, we didn't see that, just like the convention center, we didn't see all those things. And our infrastructure, especially in the downtown, is very old, and being a former electrician, oh my goodness. Yeah, good luck with that. I just see a lot of, a lot of issues, and maybe I just know too much but not enough on this, but, but anyway, that's kind of where I'm at. I'll yield.
If I could just make a comment in response.
Go ahead, Dustin.
You know, Vice Mayor, those, those are all very valid comments and concerns, and, you know, our, our objective here is not to pursue this for, for the sake of pursuing it. And I think through the early stages of pursuing this, the, the solutions for increasing your Orville's renewable energy and, and energy resilience initiatives, and, and the ones that are the right fit for the city of Orville, will, will come to light through some of this process. And, you know, frankly, I'm, I'm a civil engineer, power and water infrastructure guy my entire career. I really appreciate the city's position on this, we do as a company as well, and, you know, really, we're here to present this as, as an opportunity to the city, and, and again, provide this optionality for the city as we, you know, dive into the early stages of this. We'll, we'll be the first ones to support an, an objective analysis alongside the city to ultimately make some informed decisions about how to proceed. And the purpose of the, of this item for tonight was, was really just to begin to socialize, you know, what is, to your point, a very complex program and, and undertaking that, that's going to require quite a bit more of information and, and education for the council and others involved here. So really, we were just looking for the, the city's initial interest to continue to hear this, and for us to bring back even more information on the 20th in a subsequent meeting, and, and really, that's what was on the table here, not to take away from Patrick's proposal in the, in the staff report. But I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
And I'd like to ask if, if the council would like us to pursue this further, bring it back on the 20th, what kind of information would you like to have to, to kind of bring this home, or to, for you to be able to digest?
I think I've said enough, but yeah, so I'd like to see more.
Uh, Councilman Thompson had a question there.
She was first.
Oh, she took ours off, so.
Oh, okay. Did you have a comment, councilwoman?
Well, as an aside, I think we have another option.
Okay, so, go ahead.
My, I have similar sentiments, again, with Councilman Smith, Vice Mayor Smith, in that I do see a lot of waste in, in a massive grid, like, if, if our infrastructure of high importance or essential infrastructure were clustered together in a smaller area, I would see the, how a microgrid around those would be a good option. But the fact that, if you look at this map, that is done so spread out, and then, so with that, you have a lot of wasted area of, and then I'm thinking about how many panels and batteries, I would, just like Vice Mayor Smith said, I would be much more inclined to individually on these buildings, putting, you know, backup power to make sure that when power goes down, that their lights are staying on. But again, the hospital already has that. Sewer treatment plant already has that. So, you know, getting that done for Corp Yard, or getting it done for City Hall, or whether it be Southside Community Center, or the convention center, I think we should choose, if we're going to do this, a couple, just a few buildings. We don't need to spread it out, bring people who need to come to, if it's cold season, somewhere where it's warm, if it's hot season, somewhere where it's cooled, but instead of powering a large area of spread-out utilities, I would see just putting backup power and generators on specific locations. I mean, we had a mobile backup generator that we, I believe we still have.
Okay.
So, you know, that would be much cheaper than 40, 18, whatever, million dollars with, with tariffs of, if we needed the best, than a couple other backup generators that we can put over to the convention center, to the city hall, Southside, or wherever it might be, what we might deem at that moment to be the best use of emergency center, where that energy is most needed. I think that would be a better use of public funds versus 18 to 40 to 50 to 60 million dollars, plus the batteries and all the panels and all the usage and all that.
I would like to add to Patrick's request on what kind of information should be brought back, as they've been stated here. One question I have is, what would be the planned replacement of existing infrastructure? And the reason I ask that, because one of the power poles down on Fifth Avenue that was broken by the wind was leaning over, and they had a PG&E truck with a boom holding the pole up in the meantime until they could get a crew there to fix it. So tells me we've got an awful lot of poles in their system here in our community that are very old and needing replacement. If the microgrid were to come through, is that the part of the plan is to replace existing infrastructure, is a question, in terms of where and what kind? And then the money that's talked about, the grant, is that money coming from us, or is it coming from the revenues of PG&E, or where that money's coming from?
It's a mandate from the state, from the CPUC to PG&E to put up, to put up money towards these grants.
So is that money part of ratepayer money, or is that part of stockholder money of PG&E? Those are questions I'm just throwing out there.
Dustin, do you know?
Those funds are neither ratepayer money, those, those funds are not from ratepayer funds from the utilities, they're from the, from the state itself, from GoBiz. And then, and then fed down, and then fed down to the Public Utilities Commission.
So it wouldn't put a cost on us as being part of the microgrid then?
Correct, yes, and, and I wanted to clarify, too, that, you know, the, the size and scope of the project is still to be determined. So, you know, we don't, we don't want to speculate that we're going to, you know, pursue some mega project here when a much more modestly sized solution might be the best one, ultimately in the end of, of the process. I also wanted to clarify that, you know, after the grant funds, there's, there's a scope of infrastructure and, and capital improvements that come in a couple of different buckets. One is the, the private and/or public infrastructure that gets built for the hybrid energy system, so more solar, batteries, even perhaps some other standby generation, et cetera, that ultimately can be utilized to stand up this microgrid project and operate it in islanded mode. So that's a capital project in itself, and it could be privately funded and hosted by a third-party owner-operator. It could also optionally be owned and operated by the city or in, in some public-private partnership type of delivery model. So I didn't want to imply that the, the city would be expected to undertake that sort of capital investment itself. And then the other component of the investment and costs would actually be, to your question, on PG&E's infrastructure. So there would be a number of enhancements to PG&E's grid, which they would continue to own and operate in town. There will be some new switching, automations, and some other things that would be installed around town, around the, in particular, around the, around the border, once it's established of this microgrid area, to facilitate that. And they would continue to own and operate that infrastructure.
Okay.
Councilman, I think you're coming.
Real quick.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so with the smart meters, could then the residential customers opt out then? So, so that when that microgrid is energized, then I'm a business or a resident in that, within the boundaries, then, but I don't want to pay that tariff, and I don't care, I have my own method of taking care of myself? So can that, then, that smart meter, then just shut that meter off during that timeframe?
I, I think, I'd like to clarify that, or maybe ask Dustin for a clarification, but the tariff itself is actually just the cost of electricity, so the person would...
That's correct.
They would not be paying additional money, it's just, so they would either have the option of, of business as usual for their household or their business, paying the same amount of money that they would on a blue-sky day, or not having electricity. So in that, to that point, they could opt out any day and not have electricity.
Got you.
Well, yeah, sure. I, I don't, that, I'm, I'm suspicious of that, honestly, just saying, without, again, without doing that deep dive, because then I have an additional program that's going to provide me electricity that's special versus the rest of the community. And there, nothing is for free. At the end of the day, I've learned that, nothing's for free. But, and, and also, the build-out of that battery system, a backup system, would be massively different if all of those people have the capacity to jump on that program when the microbid, grid goes hot. I mean, that's a huge swing in, you know, gigawatts or whatever, megawatts, that would be able to power something like that. But anyway, enough said.
Okay, I, I would like to see it come back with some islands of critical things like these refugees. That, to me, is more important than anything. If we could put a microgrid so that those refuge locations, we can have those set in place, because, like I said, Sunday night, I was sitting around thinking about where we're going to put everybody in the meantime, and then just see what that looks like as a picture. Okay.
All right, so what did we...
I think part of what we may have missed or forgot in this late hour is that the process, it includes the specification on what gets included, and so at this point, what we're doing is asking for additional work time to further specify location ahead of being able to say, this is something we want to do.
Yeah, I agree entirely.
Just wanted everyone to recognize that.
So, do we have enough direction to staff to move forward with it?
I think so, and it sounds like what council is asking for is a pro forma of what the total cost will be, what, where the islands will be, and then how it will be paid for. So, yeah, these are things that we...
Details.
Yeah, these are things that we thought that we'd sort of vet out through the grant process, and since our energy was looking at not charging us any money and taking their own, I mean, I feel like they have some incentive to be successful because they're not getting paid if they, if they don't, other than the $5,000 that requested. But I think that it's a fair request, and be happy to bring that back.
Okay. Solid.
We do have two public comments on this.
Oh, okay.
My apologies, sir. And we will begin with Brian Wong and follow it with Pete Gibson.
Okay.
Just real quick, what is the application deadline for this funding?
Dustin, do you know that?
I think it's April. Dustin, what, is, is, isn't it in April, the application deadline?
That's right. So it's, the initial application is in April, that's correct, for the tranche one batch of projects, and, and that's the bucket that we're, that the city is currently in.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Wong.
Good evening, I'm Mayor, Council. Yes, so I highly recommend that council support Patrick Pyatt and his efforts to find solutions for a microgrid system for our city. The reason being that, like, energy is a big component of the way we live today. So investors that want to invest in our community today for, like, a plant right now, I know of, like, many plants going in, they're looking for homes for manufacturing, like, parts to batteries. It's a huge thing around here, there's lots of it going on over in Reno. So there are certain metrics that they look for in a community if they want to invest there. The energy infrastructure is huge. So we might have all the, like, energy going through our power lines, but how can we supply that for industry that might want to come here? In terms of the microgrid systems, you know, it's a great solution. There's many ways of generating the power that goes into the microgrids. Right now, today, we're hearing about a system that's offered by PG&E, but we talk about Yosemite Clean that wants to come to our city, there's other, you know, entities that want to do green energy in our city. So those green energy systems can actually generate the power that we need. We can generate it from hydrogen, well, we already know that we can do it from solar. You know, like, for my startup, we want to do it with renewable diesel, so those things are real. The state of California wants to go to green fuels and electrification. The impediment right now is our infrastructure system. So how do we get there? So the microgrid is one of those components. And later on, when we think about, like, switching and all these issues with microgrids, they're going to be all controlled by computers, they're going to be automated. So these solutions are coming online. Right now, it's going to be localized within a microgrid system, but once you get that system figured out, it could be throughout the city. So these solutions are coming, people are starting to do it, and one of the biggest impediments in selling more EVs in our state, and we know it's a real thing, look at all the Teslas on the road, is how do you charge all these vehicles right now? So having these microgrids is very easy. You won't drain all the power just out of the power lines. You have these storage areas that, hey, you know, it's, you know, you can drain those batteries that where we stored up the power. So that's one practical application on how we can move forward today, because you're not draining power off the lines, you're draining it off the batteries. And we can support more EVs.
Got you.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That is something that I was hoping to, something I'm working on at a larger scale, but the microgrid sort of helps that, is that we, PG&E has told us that they don't have enough power for us to, to power everything. They say if someone's coming in, they want to know about it so they can start thinking about it. We don't have the power to be able to, to bring in, say, a supercharging station, you know, so since they don't have the power for us to do it, I'm looking for solutions to be able to create the power ourselves, to be able to have those in place.
Okay, what was the other public comment? Oh, welcome.
Very interested me, I have two solar panels but no batteries, so I didn't do many a good the other night. I was out, lived real close to the hospital, and usually I don't lose power because I'm on their grid. However, I love the idea that Mr. Wong brought up with the microgrid for future. One of the questions I, question that I have, could, after a certain amount of time, 10 years, the city take over this microgrid and use it for revenue? It was also mentioned that the island that you did had a lot of open space, so could that be used as a marketing for getting future business in those areas? And I believe that Orville Hope Center is in that, real close to your new facility, and we have a 40,000-square-foot warehouse, and we would love to put people in emergency situations or store emergency equipment. And I believe I read a couple months ago that you may have approved a cogeneration plant real close to Fifth Avenue that might produce hydrogen in the next couple of years?
It's a discussion, but I don't think we...
They actually, they bought a piece of property in the county, just off, just across the railroad tracks from us, so they're coming to the area, but they're not coming here.
Well, that's unfortunate, because that could have tied in to that same grid system. And with hydrogen, I would love to see a hydrogen station in Butte County, the closest hydrogen station is in Roseville, and hydrogen has great potential as energy as well. And I would love competition to PG&E, or as a consumer, have a choice of where I get my power. I have two solar systems, I had a credit of $2,500, but they only gave me 515. I don't understand their math. If it was the other way around, I would have been to have to pay them $2,500. And I also had to pay to use their electricity distribution to go out, even though I paid it for it to come in. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Looks like we have enough for good discussion.
We have marching orders.
You have marching orders? All right.
We like good discussion.
Thank you all, appreciate the discussion. Next item, where are we at here? Well, we have to open up the public hearing, non-adjourned items, as a secondary of that. Anyone?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we did have Pete Gibson up here, again, for one comment.
I'm coming to Hope Center Director, I came before you on the first meeting in January, and requested a partnership of the sponsoring of a concert that we have February 17th, which is literally right around the corner. And I've been trying to get, reading the minutes on the website, haven't seen anything, looking at the agendas, and I was just curious, following up, if you had made a decision or, and I have the amounts here, I handed out a flyer for the different levels, but if you needed to be reminded of the levels, I can give those to you as well.
Go ahead.
Okay. The first level, bronze, is $300, and that gets two tickets to the... Okay. The first level, bronze is $300, and that gets two tickets to the concert. Silver, excuse me, silver is $500, gets four tickets. Gold is a thousand, 10 tickets. And 2,500 um, is a platinum with 25 tickets.
Okay.
And this is a fundraiser for the Hope Center as well.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Bruce singing there?
Hmm?
Bruce singing there?
Oh, I'm sorry. So uh, Brian Marcy of Marcy Brothers, come from the local guy. And then Kristen Brown, um, who's out of Roseville, who was just recently on The Voice. And then one of her students, who actually lives here, Elia Nicholson. She's a student, I believe, at LP, will be singing as well.
Thank you.
Good stuff.
All right. Um, future agenda items, council?
Oh, the gateway. Update.
I think there was an email.
There was an email on the, the gateway. Isn't there a-
Yeah, we sent out, we sent out a letter last week to um, the developer to, to provide us with an update. So as soon as I hear back from him, I have not heard back yet, so.
Okay.
Right.
Any correspondence? I have one item that I'd like the council to consider. Uh, AT&amp;T has a proposal for the CPUC to uh, remove their responsibility to phone coverage to the area. Um, I've gotten a lot of calls about that from the rural area. And it's really difficult because how is the 911 system gonna be supported into our mountain community? Uh, they don't have cell coverage in most of those areas. We have, don't have cell coverage in a lot of areas in our own community. So uh, if this council liked to, I'd like to send a letter from this council to CPUC over the uh, asking to keep the local phone service in place until-
Yes.
Okay. Until they can provide cell coverage to everything. Okay.
Good cell coverage.
Yeah, good cell coverage.
Even then, even then, lines go down, towers happen.
Oh, yeah. Right.
So, without being-
Would you like us to bring a draft letter back or work with somebody to-
I think, I think it's a simple purpose that we just, just turn, reverse our action.
Okay.
That's all we're talking about.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Any other correspondence from the council? Then I would entertain and adjourn this meeting to um, the regular meeting of the Orville City Council will be held February 20th, 2024 at 4:00 PM.
All right.
We are adjourned, folks. Thank you all for this late hour.